Commissioner Nordike.
Uh, thank you. First of all, I've had, uh, two individuals message me during this meeting. You guys were coming across, across loud and clear to me, but I have two people who are observing the meeting online who are saying they're having a real heck of a time hearing. They say everyone sounds very quiet, so I defer to CC Media staff to work on that. Um, in the meantime, I, I just had a couple of questions. So I really appreciate the client statistics which shows that we are serving 7,782 household members, which is huge. I would imagine that if, but for these public housing programs, Section 8 programs and affordable housings, these folks might be on the streets. And I'm kind of curious if we could get the number that includes not just these folks, but the people that we are providing temporary housing for through our shelter on Portland Road, the managed campsite that we've opened across the street from City Hall. I think my constituents would be very curious to hear how many people we are housing even through a temporary basis. And I, I wouldn't expect you to know that number off the top of your head, but I would be very curious to hear how many total people through managed campsites and shelters and, and the 7,700 individuals we're serving. So, and that might be a little homework assignment, but I, I, and I know that number ebbs and flows, but I think it would be helpful to help tell our story to the public as to how many people are already getting some form of housing relief and how much more there is and how much far further we have to go.
Absolutely. So I think that's something that Gretchen Bennett and our team can work on. Um, and we can, and work on reporting that on the next go around. I do know that, um, our navigators visit many of those locations on a regular basis for those in-person repeated contacts, and we've had some great success because those individuals are at Church at the Park. They're at a location that we can find them. Um, we're looking forward to future navigation centers that maybe provide that stepping stone for us to, to stabilize individuals into the next relation of, of, um, independent, uh, programs such as the homeless rental assistance and scatter site. So they're very imperative and we're happy to, to, to report on that on, in our program if, if that's something they would like.
Thank you, and I echo everything that Counselor, or Commissioner Hoy and Commissioner Andrews said, said. Well, well said, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and just to highlight, uh, the question that Commissioner Nordike mentioned there, uh, that this is some of the work that the Mid-Valley Valley Homeless Alliance is, is spearheading with the coordinated entry and that sort of thing. So a lot of those stats are, you might, you might talk to the folks there, Ms. Utes, because that's really the place to find that data. So we're not talking, we're not duplicating individuals, that sort of thing. So we're talking about, uh, some good statistics, uh, that we haven't had in the past. So thank you. Uh, let's see. I think I saw Commissioner Stapleton and then Commissioner Leon. Can I hear you, Commissioner Stapleton? You're off of mute, but you're not able to, we're not able to hear you. No. No. Let's go to Commissioner Leon and then maybe you can work on that and we'll get back to you.
Um, thank you. Um, first and foremost, I don't want to be echoing, but every, all the other commissioners have stated. So, um, but thank you, Director Utes, for all the work and your team has done, um, for the unchallenged community. Um, you had mentioned earlier that, um, the navigators are doing a significant amount of outreach and specifically in the areas where there are homeless population and unchallenged communities. Um, there's around the Rite Aid area, a, um, growing, um, group occurring, um, there again as well. Are the navigators checking in on those, um, people on a consistent and continuous basis and trying to get them access to resources and, um, whatever ways possible to ensure that, um, they know that they have support available to them?
Yes, absolutely. I can tell you both, um, the Salem Housing Navigators and the Arches Navigation Teams has, have both been in those areas. And, and our navigators really, uh, are in tune with where, uh, the latest camps come up, uh, even down to the fact of helping, um, a farming community out, uh, north that was unable to get combines into their fields. The navigation team went out and supported, um, our homeless neighbors out there and trying to, to work out an agreement to be able to get the combines through, and they were able to farm those fields and get their crops done in effort to be able to, uh, come up with alternates and, and keep them in place and get them into locations. That's just a little tidbit of what they do on a daily basis out there in the field.
Thank you, Ms. Utes. I just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, CC Media did identify a problem and they have resolved this. So folks are able to hear us now. So FYI, uh, should we go back to Commissioner Stapleton? Did you resolve your problem?
We'll try. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, no, my comments were just about the, the issues that we were having with our media. So all fixed.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Utes? All right. Thank you so much, and thank you for your fine work. And please pass along all of the sentiments that you heard tonight from the commission to, to your staff. And I think it's really important that they know that we appreciate their hard work and they're, they're the folks on the ground getting this done, and we really appreciate it.
I will. Thank you.
And if there's nothing else, I see nothing on our agenda, so we.
Okay. I'm going to call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency for July 26th to order. If the recorder, please call the roll.
Board Member Stapleton.
Here.
Board Member Anderson.
President.
Board Member Phillips.
Here.
Board Member Leon.
Here.
Board Member Gonzalez.
Here.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Nordike.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Okay. Any additions or deletions, Chris?
No.
Okay. I have no one lined up for public comments, so we'll go to the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Louis.
So we have item 3.1A, the minutes of the June 28th, uh, draft Urban Renewal Agency minutes. We have 3.3A, Riverfront Draft Downtown Urban Renewal Area Open for Business Grant Program, and that concludes the consent calendar.
Is there any discussion? Would the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Phillips.
Aye.
Board Member Leon.
Aye.
Board Member Gonzalez.
Aye.
Board Member Hoy.
Aye.
Board Member Nordike.
Aye.
Board Member Lewis.
Aye.
Board Member Stapleton.
Aye.
Board Member Anderson.
Aye.
Chair Bennett.
Aye. Okay. Kristin, I apologize. Did you have anything you wanted to say about this, or would you just like to have the program go on through?
Um, I don't have anything to add. Uh, we, other than we are doing outreach to the downtown businesses that could benefit from the program and working with them directly.
So if they're interested, they should contact your office?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. I don't see any further business. Uh, the Urban Renewal Agency is adjourned. Okay, I'm going to call the Salem City Council meeting for July 26th to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
President.
Counselor Phillips.
Here.
Counselor Leon.
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here. Okay. Any additions or deletions, Counselor Hoy?
Yes. I moved additions and deletions, yes. I apologize. Today seems to be a day for technical problems.
No, no.
I printed them and they're in the other room. So I move, uh, addition of item 3.3C. We have a, an added memo from Chief Womack regarding the Marion and Pollock Mobile Crisis Response Teams and item, as memory serves, uh, five, uh, one second, I apologize. 5.8, uh, the report that had not been, had been referenced but was not attached, has not been attached.
And that's on five, which?
Five A.
Five A, okay. Very good. And you moved the additions and deletions, correct? Who seconded that?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, ready, correct, call, roll.
Yes. Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Counselor, comments. I'm going to start off, if you don't mind. Uh, first of all, I want to, uh, second all the comments made regarding the HRAP program. That was a program I started in conjunction with the Housing Authority as well as, uh, the Community Action Agency when I became mayor, and to hear the level of success it's had. And I think the new direction is tremendously positive. Uh, it was a real leap to say we could take on the hardest to house and have anything like the success, uh, that the staff has been able to have. So I just got to, uh, second all that and, and thank, uh, manager powers for being willing at the time to, uh, go into funding this kind of program. It was a, a new idea. So, uh, that is moving along the way it has, and the tremendous work our staff as well as Community Action Agency staff have done is just really, I think for all of us gratifying. I know I do personally find it very gratifying. Uh, we also had a couple other things I want to mention. We, uh, had the dedication of the Jerry Frank Rotary Amphitheater. Couple hundred people arrived to, uh, congratulate Rotary and particularly Mr. Frank and recall the tremendous, uh, contribution that Jerry Frank has made to this community and the state of Oregon as well as nationally. It was, uh, quite a good, uh, quite a good program and I thought, uh, really moving. Mr. Frank's now 97 years old. It was really exciting. Uh, he was, he was genuinely moved by it, uh, and certainly it is a spectacular, uh, addition to the community. I'm looking forward to the first big use of it beyond its dedication. I think all of us are. It will be managed by the City of Salem. Uh, it's also mentioned, we had the Ironman, uh, program, uh, activity here in town over the weekend. I had a chance to go down there about 5:00 AM and welcome into Salem. 2,500, uh, athletes from around the country and really from other countries as well. I know Counselor Nordike had a chance to practice her Spanish on a fellow in from Spain. It was very, very exciting, a huge turnout. Uh, this brought an estimated, uh, $11 million into the city's, uh, region's economy. Um, 2,500 people actually participated. They're planning on coming back at least for the next three years. Uh, this is a, a great, great program. It's very exciting. And I'll tell you what, uh, there was not one person involved, uh, from Ironman who did not thank us for the tremendous work done by our city staff. Uh, Public Works, Parks, uh, the police, uh, the folks who deal with volunteers, including people who recruited volunteers to participate, absolutely blew them away in terms of the tremendous support this community gave them. But one name kept coming up, and I really feel like I want to, uh, share it with you, and that's Becky George, uh, in Public Works, was cited consistently by both the Rotary, which did a magnificent job with their program, uh, dedicating the amphitheater to Jerry Frank, and the Ironman staff, uh, just repeatedly commented on the work she and her staff did. So, uh, just wanted to make you aware of that. So, uh, and then I guess just finally, um, I'm sure folks who watch noted that the Market Street encampment has been removed. Uh, there are some folks that I think we ought to at least recognize had participated in that. Top of the list, uh, is, uh, our own Gretchen Bennett, uh, who really helped coordinate a great deal of the activity and certainly the Oregon Department of Transportation, uh, for agreeing to allow to get this really cleaned up down there. Uh, Denny's Restaurant hosted a city-initiated rest and resource site, uh, in the area, handing out coffee and ice water. City staff, uh, contacted neighboring businesses to alert them to what was going on. Salem Transit gave free bus rides for folks who wanted to leave the area to go to other, uh, locations, get other, uh, assistance, uh, get other assistance here in town. Be Bold Street Ministries, which does a tremendous job in the homeless community, just did a whole batch of activities. Snow Cones and Hot Meals. I mean, they had a lot of things they were doing. There is just too large a list of nonprofits and public entities that participated in this, but really was an outstanding project, and I'm sure we're all very pleased to see that, particularly you, Counselor Hoy, to see that cleaned up. So very pleased with that. So it's been a really, really interesting week in Salem this week. Jim?
Yeah, just real quick to follow up, a little different perspective. As a daily walker of Riverfront Park, I was down there on Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday, and you can't believe the number of people that were working, how much time and effort it takes to set something like this up. And then I was down again this morning a little before 10:00, and it was almost completely undone. The work that these folks put in to set it up and then to take it down is really noteworthy. It was a great event.
Thank you, Jim. Vanessa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in addition to the comments of Mr. Mayor, that Mr. Mayor had to make about that, now that the Market Street encampment is gone, I've had a lot of folks ask me where are people going? And I can tell you that there is a great deal of work that the city already has done and is doing at this moment to try and find more shelter options. And today I toured a potential temporary site for a 90-day women's shelter with Counselor Leon and Gretchen Bennett. So we are looking at a variety of ways for persons with maybe an empty warehouse or another sort of private business in the area. If you are interested in temporarily housing women shelters while we are transitioning from temporary shelter, managed camps, to the hotels that are being purchased by some of our community partners, please contact the city. We have small stipends available. If you're interested in temporarily providing a shelter for five women or 10 women or maybe even 20 women, we would have professional staff to supervise and, as I mentioned, potential stipends available as well. So I've already posted about on my Facebook page. It got shared about 50 times, so I think the word is getting out there. But I think if a lot of folks want to be a part of the solution, this is one of the ways that you can do so as a private business owner in the area. A couple other quick updates. The city is going to be funding $15,000 for professional headstone repair and resetting at Salem Pioneer Cemetery. That's a cemetery in my ward and is truly one of the treasured historic places in the city of Salem. And unfortunately, the cemetery was hit really hard by the ice storm and a lot of fallen trees. So I'm really happy to hear that we will be putting some support towards repairing these priceless artifacts within Salem city limits. And last but not least, on a more personal note, I'm really excited to report that as a mental health advocate, I'm going to be continuing this journey into advocacy as a member of the board for the National Alliance on Mental Illness Oregon. They their Board of Directors has recently appointed me to their board. And if you're not familiar with NAMI, as I said, that's the National Alliance of Mental Illness. It's an organization that's dedicated to improving the quality of life for people living with mental illness. NAMI Oregon is the state chapter of this national body, and they advocate at all levels of government and within healthcare systems. So you can find out more about us at namior.org. So anyway, thank you for letting me give a personal plug. If you are interested in education, if you're interested in free groups or other programs to support those who are having mental health issues, please reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So like I have done for the last few weeks, I would like to start off with a land acknowledgement before I go into some details about other activities that have been going on. So a land acknowledgement is a formal statement that recognizes and respects our indigenous peoples as traditional stewards of this land and enduring relationship that exists between indigenous folks and their traditional territories. It is and should be the way we start our council, our councils to start our meetings. I would like to be able to bring a proposal for city staff to draft a land use acknowledgement that we can include in our city council agenda as a permanent item for future city council meetings. And I made modifications to this one. This one is specific to the city of Salem. So we're gathered on the land of the Kupuya, who today are represented by the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Round and the Confederate Tribes of the Salits Indians, whose relationships with this land continues to this day. We offer gratitude for the land itself, for those who are stewarded for generations, and for the opportunity to study, learn, work, and be in community on this land. We acknowledge that our city's history, like many others, is fundamentally tied to the first colonial developments in the Willamette Valley. Finally, we respect and expectfully acknowledge and honor past, present, and future indigenous communities who live in and around Salem. I strongly urge everyone to do more than just a land acknowledgement, consider learning more about the land that you reside on and recognizing the work and activities of our indigenous people. Counselor Nordike earlier had mentioned that we had visited a potential site that could potentially be a temporary women's shelter in downtown Salem. I hope that other businesses and business owners consider housing our homeless community during the next few months until the Navigation Center and the modified shelters are built. And again, as Counselor Nordike had mentioned, there is city stipends available to help with some of the costs. After the meeting, I actually went to try a new downtown restaurant called Pasta Eatery. There you get to choose your pasta, your sauce, and your toppings, and there's also a soup option. There's plenty of eating space available, indoors and outdoors. The restaurant's actually located where the Vietnamese Bidmen Sandwich Buffet Restaurant used to be. This is a special shout out to Director Fernandez. Thank you so much for you and your staff for coming and checking on the health of a tree in the southeast Salem neighborhood. Thankfully, that particular tree was okay. It just had some weird markings that were growing on the leaves that the staff is going to be looking into, and it appears that there was past damage from possibly a vehicle collision years ago. And I strongly urge community members who are concerned about the health of their trees to reach out to Public Works to check on city trees. On a side note, and this is more of a sombering, but it's a big thank you. Back in January, I had mentioned that an important member of my family and the chief ten of my clan had passed away due to complications of COVID-19. The amount of care and warmth I had received from not only other counselors but from city staff and the community was welcomed and much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been talking about a lot of activity in the city, especially down at the river, and that's terrific. There's also some other activity down there that has been from various religious organizations that have been meeting in the park. And there's some consternation about this among some members of the public. The two that come to mind, not the consternation, but the religious organizations are Awaken Ministries and Salem House Prayer, which may be the same thing. And I know there are certain rules and regulations in the Salem City Code that relates to gatherings in parks. And just so the public can see can be aware of this, I would appreciate it if either the city manager or the city attorney could just brief us on what is required and what is not required in the parks and what may be done about that if, in fact, the permit requirements aren't complied with. Thanks.
Okay. You're expecting a staff report? What are you after?
Well, all I want right now, if if possible, I'd just soon have the city manager or the city attorney report on that. If if they need some time for a staff report, that's fine, but I just want some sort of discussion of it by the attorney and the manager tonight.
If you'd hold that, Steve, for your your portion of this, and have you respond to it under your part of it rather than question and answer time during Counselor comment. Okay, Virginia?
Thank you so much, Mayor. And I just wanted to thank all my other counselors. You guys are bringing up all the good news that's been happening around the city lately. And Counselor Leon, thank you so much for the land acknowledgement. I always really enjoy when you bring those forward, and I hope that we can see that on our agenda in the near future. I do have two things that I'd like to talk about today, and the first is a personal story of self betrayal, guys. And this kind of seems like a night for personal stories, but I guess that's a good thing. So all my life, I've been steeped in a patriarchal society where I've internalized a lot of mindsets and responses. And to notice those activities and work against them sometimes is very challenging for me to see and very exhausting work. And sometimes I can slip back into these old ways and things go without noticing. Like recently, when I had to deal with my upcoming motion. You see, I have asked for something, and immediately I found myself backpedaling and trying to not be too much and not ask for too much and trying to make my request smaller so that I wasn't I wasn't troubled for anybody. And I see that a lot with women. I see that a lot with me, just trying to take up less space and not be trouble and not ask for things in a way and and expect to get them. So this motion tonight is going to be my first motion that comes to a vote, and it's really, really important to me. And it's important that I bring forward to you something that I'm proud of and something that I fully support and that I'm excited about. And so I intend to make my motion later today, but I am going to be going for option two. And so I wanted to give you guys a heads up that I had some internal struggles and wrestled through it with the help of staff. And so I'm excited to bring that forward and have debate and conversation. Whether I had five votes for that or not, I don't know, but I am excited and I want to bring forward something that I'm going to be really proud of in the future. So thank you for that. And then one more thing that I wanted to talk about was an email that all of us got from city manager today, and that was about the PGE rates. And I'm not sure if any of you guys got the chance to read it. I know it's a busy day on council days with so much going on. But I just wanted to say this spurred me on to email the city manager right away with my angst about this and my frustration. And just so you know, it looks like small commercial businesses will be getting an increase of 7.8%, residential an increase of 6.4%, large commercial an increase of 4.4%. But small and medium industry won't see any increase, and the extra-large industries will be getting a decrease in their rates by 3.2%. And so it's this kind of thing that kind of drives me a little batty. And, you know, I emailed the city manager and just said, what on God's earth is happening, right? And I hope that this also is for you all on to just kind of say, whoa, hold on, you know, what's happening here? And PGE has a lot of good reasons for increasing their rates. You know, they want to make sure that fire wildfires don't happen, and there's a lot of investment that needs to happen. And I understand that. But I also understand the need that everybody needs to pay their fair share, and it can't just be the residents and our small business owners. We really all need to come together. So I really do hope that we can get some answers from PGE on on the different concerns that I voice. And I hope that if that's not good enough, that hopefully staff can provide testimony to the Oregon Public Utilities Commission and that we can really get our concerns expressed and heard to the right people. So thanks, guys.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to underscore and echo Counselor Stapleton's remarks regarding the electricity rates. I had the exact same concern when I read them today. Like, why individuals and small businesses and not the other folks? That didn't make any sense to me. I'd like to know more about that. So thank you for voicing that, Counselor Stapleton. I also wanted to just circle back to the I-5 Market Street situation. That's been an ongoing, probably the number one issue in my ward for the past several months, many, many months. And I put a lot of time and energy into trying to make that situation better, trying to manage it, and then ultimately trying to end it because it just wasn't a safe place for anybody to live. I know people felt safe because it gave them shelter, but the the cold, hard reality is that we had at least six deaths associated with that site, and that's not okay. And it just had to end because it's not a place that people should be living. And so I'm really grateful for the staff who have worked hard to try to find better places for those who are willing to move to better places. And grateful to the work from ODOT and from Governor Brown in working with us on this situation to try to make it better. And I think in the end, we have had a positive outcome. I'm sad that it took as long as it did, and I wish that more people had better options, but I think we got to the best outcome we could. So thank you, everybody who worked on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. When I started this, I was Jose Gonzalez. You know, I always introduce myself in multiple languages to highlight the city's cultural diversity. You know, and I should have started with this language because it's my favorite, and it's Spanglish. English didn't originate in this country, and then Spanish was forced upon the native people in Mexico, so it wasn't their original language either. You know, so in my opinion, you know, Spanglish, along with the many Native American languages, are really our country's true languages because they originated here, and they're not widely spoken anywhere else. Now, I did want to share one of those bad news, good news stories. Eight days ago, a person in my ward called me to inform me that her mother, his mother was hit by a car. She was in a wheelchair at an intersection that only had stop signs at two sides, and a car that didn't need to stop, you know, didn't see her. You know, so I can't say too much more because there's an investigation happening. But even though he was still in shock, literally a couple hours later, he reaches out to me, and he really, his concern was for others, just for the future of that intersection. So Monday morning, I reached out to Director Fernandez, and he quickly jumped on it and let me know that actually that intersection was not within the city limits but in Marion County. So he reached out to his counterpart over there, who got back to me a couple days later with some good news. And that's that that intersection by this week, if not early next week, will have stop signs at all four corners, at four sides. And also, they're going to reprioritize that intersection for the ADA adjustments, and which would have been years from now, but it'll be done in less than a year. So I wanted just to publicly thank Director Fernandez because he did make a real difference here today.
Great. Great work, Counselor Gonzalez. Anyone else? Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, and just really a lot of powerful comments from everyone tonight. It was a joy listening to this. Strong work, everybody. Once again, I'm going to talk about, you know, COVID-19 and kind of where we're at. You know, we've had progress over the last, you know, 16 months, but we've kind of seen the limits of our progress currently. You know, Oregon's gotten to that past the 70% partially vaccinated mark on July 2nd, but we had some stalling of uptake of, you know, people utilizing the vaccine. And and the issue with that is that COVID is not gone. You know, it's there's an increase nationally. There's an increase regionally here, you know, in the state of Oregon and locally. You know, I can attest to that. You know, we're seeing more and more of the more infectious and transmissible Delta variant. It's two to two and a half times more infectious than the original COVID, which has all of us, you know, scientists and healthcare experts concerned, which is once again why we are pleading with people to utilize these safe and effective available vaccines. They can literally save your life or the life of a loved one. Now is an excellent time to get protected from these safe and effective vaccines. You know, don't forget that while there aren't mask mandates publicly because of some of the prior successes that we've achieved, you're still supposed to wear a mask inside the hospital, you know, and still in any place like airplanes, trains, buses, you still got to wear a mask. And we don't want to go back to the time of like lockdowns and mandates. We really want to, you know, take care of this together. So please, you know, if you haven't been vaccinated yet, use a mask if you're out in a busy area. And I know my family, we've got two kids that are under the age of 12, and not all people, you know, kids under the age of 12 can't yet get vaccinated. So when we go to a busy indoor location, my wife and I are wearing masks still because this just this new Delta variant is that much more transmissible that we don't know that we have, you know, the protection of just being vaccinated, which we both are. So, you know, now is the time. These are safe. They're effective. I mean, I think I think some of the biggest reasons people haven't done it yet are either they're busy or they're worried about the side effects. Personally, the side effects were very mild. I mean, minimal to no arm pain, maybe one time I had a little bit of achiness the next day for a few hours or just no symptoms. Most of my coworkers, be they nurses or doctors, feel like they could have gone to work the next day. So just, you know, reach out if you've got any questions. Go to the Oregon Health Authority, Google it, it's available. It's everywhere in the community now to get those safe and available vaccines.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, regarding Counselor Anderson's question, I'm certainly happy to provide a high-level response this evening with with help from staff, and we can certainly follow up with a more detailed. And we can certainly follow up with a more detailed report if desired by council. The, the high level response is that park permits are, are needed. For amplification of sound, for erecting tents. If a group wants to reserve a specific facility within a park. We first start with information through our parks reservation staff. And you noted our, our leader of that band earlier, Mayor Becky George. So people are aware plus what's available on our webpage. If we observe or receive concerns or complaints regarding. Structures, noise, uses even, we will. Follow up with the, either the permit applicant. If the permit was not covering all of the activities. Or talk to the person on site regarding an unpermitted activity. If that fails, we then move to warnings. And this is per council policy that requires progressive action to achieve compliance. Of course, depending upon the severity of, of an incident, a code violation, but overall. We take a progressive approach to compliance. If the warnings aren't successful, then we move into a citation and citations have been issued. For uses at, at, at the park that has been mentioned this evening. And then if those continue to fail to achieve compliance, we move into a misdemeanor. Of course, throughout the process, we are following due process. To ensure that our actions are, are, are consistent with city code and. Individuals or groups have, have the right to, to due process. And I'd be happy to, with the help of staff, follow up if, if there are additional questions. Or if council would like details, specifics on, on permit requirements.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Powers. I'm just curious, when it gets to the misdemeanor level. Does that give the city authority to ban a certain group or do we have to continue down the road of non-compliance to get to? The point where we would actually evict someone?
I would have to refer that to the city attorney and we might have to follow up on that question, council. I don't ban me. City Attorney Atchison may have an answer though for you this evening.
There is authority in the Salem revised code to exclude individuals from the park or, or violation of park rules as well as misdemeanor citations. Again, it's sort of, it's subject to the progressive steps. We wouldn't initially start with that and it wouldn't be banning of a particular group that would be excluding particular individuals.
Okay, councillor Nordike.
Thank you councillor Anderson for bringing this up. I'm very supportive of having a staff report to understand more information, know what our council policy is. I would love to see more information. I'm curious to know what the citation amounts are. Is there a scale? You know, what are, what is the revised code or statute that triggers misdemeanor? Yes, I would love to hear more information. I think this is a really important matter. I've had plenty of constituents reach out to me to express concerns about certain groups commandeering chunks of a park and making others feel very unwelcome. So I'm very concerned about it and I would love to get more information from staff. Thank you.
I assume we can get that done in less than a, an hour.
Motion. No, certainly this, this, since the, I'm receiving from councils an interest in that staff report, Mayor, so I'm, I'm happy to, happy to have that.
Okay, good.
And I, I guess on that, on that same approach regarding the. PGE rate increases, I will follow up with the PGE representative. Staff will not though, unless directed by council, will not be testifying before the Public Utility Commission. But as, as the next step, I will ask for some additional information from the PGE representative.
Could, could you ask Mr. Powers, Ms. Valise, if she would come meet with the council? We could put her on somewhere, whether an information report or somebody, if she's willing to, obviously. To give councillors a chance to talk to her and ask her questions. She's very good at, at dealing with us. I think that would be very helpful.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Just, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, please go ahead, councillor Phillips.
While we're talking about PGE, I remember at the first meeting after the ice storm that I attended here. I had asked if we were going to get some follow-up specifically from PGE in terms of like the response. I know that, you know, many of us experienced power outages during that time and it seemed like things were a little bit worse. It might just be there's more of us that are in PGE territory, but it was a little worse on the side of the river than on the west, you know, West Salem. So I certainly have some questions on that front too, that I, I, I don't know when we're going to get, you know, kind of a follow-up informational report.
Okay, I'm sure the, I'm sure Mr. Powers will pass that along to Wendy. She might get a question or two on ice storm response and. Why it took so long? Okay? Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. We'll go then to public comment. Phil, I see you're here. Phil Carver. You can give your name and your ward or address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Phil Carver. I'm a representative of 350 Salem, a group dedicated to reducing climate damage. And my address is 10007 Newport Road Southeast, 97306. And I'm here to, to ask that you not approve any more parking spaces at this time for Gear Park. There's over 200 parking spaces there now. I couldn't find any report on the utilization of those parking spaces or any study that showed more were needed. But even if more are needed, there are alternatives that are much more friendly to climate. Then, as Albert Einstein noted after the invention of nuclear weapons. Where respect to climate change, everything has changed except our way of thinking. And this is clearly an example of that. This is really not, is totally inconsistent with the council's. Goals of reducing climate emissions by 50% by 2035. We're not going to reduce emissions if we add more parking spaces to public parks that are not near the core downtown park. Where the big events happen. The, there are opportunities to create shuttles from other parking areas when there's a tournament at Gear Park. And I don't see anywhere that those have been investigated. So these parking spaces ruin the land. They, they increase stormwater runoff. They, they, they increase the greenhouse gases. There's nothing green growing there. There's no, a tree can't grow in, very well in a parking lot. And so I think that the, the council really needs to. Sit back and decide whether it's really serious about reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And business as usual is really not an acceptable path forward for any of us. We, we, I submitted written comments on behalf of 350 Salem. And, and I appreciate all the work that the council members do and, and, and for, as volunteers. And thank you for the time that you've given for public comment today.
Thank you, Phil. Are there any questions for Mr. Carver? All right, Laura Buell.
I'm sorry, Mayor Bennett, I did.
Who is it?
This councillor.
Got a question?
I did.
Do you? Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Carver for being here and for giving us your input regarding Salem 350. For the subcommittee that I'm on that you testified on, on zoning and the impacts we're trying to do to achieve some of the, the goals that we've set regarding emissions. You did a really nice job of kind of saying, okay, this is when I need you guys to fall on your swords and, and go all in versus like, well, this is one that's not as high of a priority. Are you telling me this is one of those situations where this is where you need us to like take an action? That's kind of commensurate with that when you testified at that subcommittee or is it not quite at that level?
I think it's, I think it's really important that the council. Change the trajectory that staff is on and that's the, some of the, the commissions are on. The trajectory has to be changed and this is a, a good point of inflection. There's not going to be any crisis if these 70 parking spaces aren't built next year or the year after. It's going to take many years to develop this park and there's plenty of time for more analysis. Of what, what are the parking spaces being used for? What are the alternatives? What can chariots provide in terms of service to the site? So I think it's, it's, it's a pause and, and it's not a final action on terms of these parking spaces. But I think the, there really needs to be a pushback from the council on this business as usual. Yeah, yeah, yeah. The council wants to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Yeah, yeah, I don't hear it. That's what I hear coming from staff.
Okay, and I, I still have another question if I'm allowed it.
Yeah, asking, asking a little about this staff thing, this yeah, yeah, yeah thing. I'm kind of intrigued by that comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, so my question is, help me understand, like, I, I don't yet understand the urgency when it comes to parking spaces. And help me understand like what's Salem 350's view that how that gets us to a better place with emissions? Is it just that it'll compel us not to use cars? And what do we do with that? You know, we're, we're literally in the middle, middle of this transition where we've got, most of us still have cars. And this is, is going to become a regional park that, that, you know, we can't get to safely without cars. And it's got things that draw people to it like a dog park. So. Help convince me or the rest of us how, how this makes a difference, you know, on those greenhouse gases.
It, it's my understanding that the, the, there's over 200 spaces there now. And that I haven't seen any studies that say how those parking spaces are utilized, when they're full, you know, what problems are happening now. And the, the, what happens is if you make it really easy for people to park free, they don't consider other alternatives like carpooling. Like if this is a regional event, a regional sporting event, which is my understanding what these parking spaces largely serve. Then those people could charter buses, they could carpool. But they won't if there's totally adequate pre-parking for any possible circumstance. It's, it's, it's just a mindset that I can drive my car with just a few members of my family. Anywhere I want, anytime I want and don't have to think about alternatives. It's been a long time since carpooling existed and systems, computer systems used for that, but they're not very well utilized because people don't see a need. So it's really shifting the mode of people thinking. And I don't know what it's going to take to have the city really seriously. Change the trajectory of its activities. But I think it's really, I, I've seen a lot of good activity on the zoning subcommittee. And, and the, the, there's a lot of action going on in the climate action plan. But I haven't seen it really translate into as many changes as I think are needed.
Okay, Trevor, do you have anything else?
No, I mean, I think I, I think I'm good. Thanks, Mayor Bennett. And thank you, Mr. Carver.
Councillor Hoy, do you have your hand up for? No, okay, councillor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Carver, for your testimony. I think one of the things you mentioned as a potential alternative to single file driving to and from would be shuttle services. Are you familiar with existing shuttle services or is that something that you are proposing that? Might one day exist to help ferry people to and from the new and improved sections of this park?
I don't have any studies or any detailed information. I just know that if there was a regional sporting event in. In, in Gear Park, that there are other parking lots out there that the city could use as a shuttle site. And just shuttle back and forth between a near, nearby parking area. So I haven't done any studies or, you know, where those opportunities are, what other cities have done in terms of. Dealing with regional sporting events. And that's just a supposition. I've just heard, I just heard it almost as a rumor. That the parking spaces are for regional sporting events. I don't know what the utilization of the parking spaces, the 200 parking spaces is now. So that's, that's what I'm saying is there's lack of really a detailed study showing that we need to pave over 70 parking spaces.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Carver, for your, for your testimony. I, I mentioned the last time this issue was in favor of the council. About the process that the city had gone through and I believe that included you and your organization. And, and the recommendation was passed unanimously by the Parks, the Parks Board. But the council, after hearing testimony, chose to have staff go back and relook at this. And so rather than 94 additional spaces, they're coming up with 70 additional spaces. What I'm hearing from you, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the reduction is not what we want. We want the elimination of those parking spaces. Is that correct?
Elimination of additional parking spaces, yes.
So, so the 70 spaces that's being proposed tonight is still 70 spaces too many?
We haven't seen evidence that they're needed, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Laura Buell. Laura, if you'd introduce yourself and your ward, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Laura Buell. I'm a resident of Ward One. I would like to comment on the updated Gear Park Master Plan. Over the next 14 years, the city council will be faced with countless decisions, both large and small. That will either bring us closer to meeting the city's greenhouse gas or GHG emission target for 2035. Or take us farther away. Tonight, you're faced with such a decision. In May, the council had in-depth discussion about the Gear Park Master Plan. You recognize that the plan would have taken us further away from meeting Salem's GHG emission targets. Because of the addition of nearly 100 parking spaces, which promotes more driving. Parking has been shown in studies to promote more driving. This would have been a problem because most of Salem's GHG emissions come from transportation. And we won't be able to meet our emission targets without dramatically lowering emissions from transportation. Because of this, you sent the plan back to staff for revision. Unfortunately, the proposed update to the Gear Park Master Plan still takes us in the wrong direction. The updated plan has not changed enough to help the city meet its emissions mandate. The proposed new parking has been only slightly lowered from 94 to 70 spaces. Given the existential climate crisis we face, given the fact that the park already has 221 parking spaces. For which a utilization study has never been conducted. And given that there are many management and multimodal transportation strategies that have not been fully explored or implemented. I urge the following amendment to the Gear Park Master Plan. Remove the proposed 70 stall parking lot and replace it with a small drop-off area and limited ADA parking. Salem's GHG emission goals will not be achieved by one silver bullet at the 11th hour. They will not be met by waiting for electric vehicles to save the day. Rather, they will be met by the cumulative impact of a thousand small decisions over the course of many years to change the way our city is built. If we are to have any hope of meeting our missions goals, we must start now. Please direct city staff to make the amendment necessary for the Gear Park Master Plan to move us in the right direction.
Thank you, Laura. Are there any questions? Councillor Anderson?
Thank you and thank you for coming, Ms. Buell. You said there were 221 parking spaces? That's a very definitive number. How did you arrive at that? Was it something from the city or did you go out and count them or what?
I counted them from the plan. I hope I counted correctly. There are a lot of them, so.
And then you just said that there has been no parking utilization study done. How did you determine that that had not happened?
I asked staff and that's what I was told.
Okay, this staff in conjunction with the master plan for Gear Park, they didn't do a parking study? That's what they told you?
Yes, I was told that there had been no parking study done.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? All right, Mickey Varney.
Let me get myself all unmuted here. Good evening, Mayor Bennett and city councillors. My name is Mickey Varney and I live in Ward Eight, West Salem. I am also vice chair of the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, also known as SPRAB. I'm here this evening to provide a bit of background in regards to SPRAB's recommendations to council regarding the Gear Park Master Plan. SPRAB is tasked with recommending and advising the council on the acquisition, development and maintenance of Salem's parks and recreational facilities. We advocate for the preservation and protection of our parks' natural resources while providing a wide range of recreational opportunities accessible to all. Salem's community parks serve and attract people from a wide geographic area. And provide the space required for larger group activities such as multifamily gathering. and provide the space required for larger group activities such as multifamily gatherings and organized sports. As Salem's population grows, so does the need for parks. Gear Park, Salem's largest community park, is a 44-acre gem. It is centrally located, has convenient access to I-5, and it has the flat land available to support multiple sports fields. This makes the Gear Park an ido-, an ideal location for tournaments and other large events that offer Salem significant economic and societal benefits. The areas set aside for parking provide additional support for larger events and are important for accommodating out-of-town visitors. The second phase of the Gear Park Master Plan was presented to SPRAB members on March 11th. Much of our follow-up discussion centered on the need for the Park Avenue parking area. Addressing recreational needs within our growing community while representing the diverse interests of the community is challenging and requires compromises. SPRAB understands the need to update older parking standards to discourage use of automobiles. The city of Salem needs to continue to implement actions moving us toward our greenhouse gas emission goals. SPRAB recognized the Gear Park Master Plan, as presented, did include reductions in the number of parking spaces from those originally recommended by the consultant. Additional reductions were concerning, though. We felt the complete elimination of the parking area supporting the Phase Two amenities could result in inequitable access for park users. After careful consideration, SPRAB unanimously supported the Gear Park Master Plan as presented. Then, on July 8th, the updated Gear Park Master Plan was presented to SPRAB. We appreciated the reiteration that the parking to support additional-
I apologize, Mickey. I apologize. Your time's up. Uh, I'd like to, though, with council permission, allow you to continue and complete your thought on this. We hadn't heard from SPRAB yet on this, so is there any objection to Mickey completing her thoughts? Okay, go ahead. Thank you, Mickey.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was trying not to rush too much.
No, no, that's okay.
SPRAB appreciated the reiteration that the parking to support additional amenities would be added incrementally rather than all at once. We also noted the recent revision removes the safe drop-off areas which could have been used for public transit access. SPRAB members expressed concerns that any further reductions to the parking area would impact accessibility unless the infrastructure to support the access was also present. So after deliberation, SPRAB members unanimously supported a motion that we stand by our previous recommendation we made in March. We included a caveat, however, that should council choose to pursue the revised plan, we encourage they do so with one, enhancement of public transportation options implemented simultaneously with development of the park, and number two, a plan to maximize tree canopy in the park for the offsetting of greenhouse gas emissions.
Okay, any questions? Mickey, I had a question on this, uh, because I, I think one of the things that gets a little confusing, we're not talking about 200 cars every day pulling into this park. This is for these discreet uses where you have large events. Are they a regular occurrence? And I'm trying to understand really what the actual use of that parking is. Is it kind of a, a once in a while, but reasonably rarely, or is it daily, or is it weekly or monthly? How, how does that work?
When we asked Becky George at the meeting, we did specifically ask about usage of the parking areas. And she said that based on her observations, that the lots were often full during tournaments, and it was unknown as to whether folks had had to had to park elsewhere, so whether the parking was adequate or not. The fact that there are two soccer fields and two ball fields allow tournaments to occur, and they therefore attract a lot of people for those events. And they're scheduled all the time.
Okay, yeah, I know I was out there for a tree planting, and the place was absolutely packed because there were different kinds of uses, whether it was soccer or baseball. Uh, I was really intrigued by how much use was going on, so thank you for explaining that, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mickey, for your testimony. You may, I think I heard you say that elimination of these spaces would result in inequitable access to the park. What did you mean by that?
Well, there are, what I meant was, uh, first of all, the current bus stops are just over half a mile away. There are two of them, one north and one south. Um, also, the, uh, new amenities, um, that are proposed, um, you know, there's some that are for, for children, and for safety reasons, it's important to have closer access to those amenities. So that's why we're supporting the, uh, addition of the park spaces. The other thing that came up in terms of equitable access is with the bus stops being over half a mile away, we were thinking about, uh, seniors, individuals with disabilities, and moms with strollers of having to go that over a half mile in possibly 117-degree heat without the benefit of shade. And so we felt that there needs to be some parking to go with the new amenities that are proposed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Thanks, Chair Varney, for coming down tonight. I just want to make sure I understand the position of the, um, advisory board. Uh, I'm going to assume that your relook and the request for some additional things like transportation and trees, that's based on the reduction to 70 parking, 70 additional parking spaces, not the re, removal of all of the additional parking spaces.
Okay, if I'm understanding your question correctly, when we were talking about the updated version with the reduction to 70 spaces, we decided to go back on our original recommendation because of the fact that there was that incremental part where the first part will be the skate park and the bike park improvements, and then next it'll be the splash pad and the playground. And so as those things are added, we wanted to ensure that the plan would allow for putting in the parking uh, that was necessary, and it could be assessed in the process. Currently, there is not funding for any parking in that area. So there's not going to be parking even when the, the bike park and skate park are first put in, at least to the best of my knowledge. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I think it does. Your, the advisory board, when it comes to 70 additional spaces, said, yes, but you need to add these amenities. But if the council were to go back to the 94 spaces, the advisory board would be just fine with that.
That is correct, as long as, uh, you know, as long as, as I said, uh, I know the council is aware of the concerns, concerns that have come up. And we just wanted to point out that as these things are implemented, we want to make sure that people can get there and that folks that still drive cars that may not have any other way to get there, that they have spaces.
So your recommendation is what, 70 or 94? What is the SPRAB recommendation?
It's actually the 94, and the reason that came up is because one of the SPRAB members said, why should we change our recommendation when previously it was built on the same idea that we wanted the, the spaces, whatever was determined, we wanted them available as the amenities kept being added. That was pointed out, that they were going to be in phases. And if it's discovered that we don't meet them, you know, they don't all have to be put in there.
Right, that's a very good point. Thank you. I think that's really misunderstood, that this does occur in phases and can, can be adjusted to need at any given point, uh, up to your maximum. So, thank you, Mickey.
You're welcome.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Varney, for your service on SPRAB. I think I heard you say that, um, in the new iteration of the plan, spaces for public transportation facilities were, were eliminated.
That, that is correct. There were a couple of pullouts in the original plan that were eliminated in the updated plan.
So those would have allowed people to take the bus right to the park and not have to walk a half a mile in 117-degree weather.
If the bus stopped there, if that makes sense, or pulled off there, okay.
But the bus is not going to stop there if there's no place for it to stop.
True.
Okay, then, I, I, I will tell you that I have been to many of these kind of sporting events, uh, not, not at this park, but as a participant. And when there are real regional events, especially in a flat park, there is sometimes temporary parking set up for the people who show up for the regional event. So do you think that's a possibility in, in Gear Park?
Uh, I do not know. You would have to ask the parks, park folks.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Great, thank you. Thank you very much for, for sharing the information. It was, it was helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to then, that's all of the public, uh, testimony, so we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Counselor Hoyt?
Mr. Mayor, I have approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item 3.3A, pulled by Counselor Anderson, 3.3B, pulled by Counselor Anderson, 3.3J, pulled by Counselor Stapleton.
J?
Correct.
Okay. So 3.3B is not being pulled?
3.3A by Anderson, 3.3B by Anderson, 3.3-
Okay. Okay, just a sec. Let me look at this again. Okay. F is not, right?
F is not.
Okay. J, but Stapleton. Okay, great, thank you. Some of that changed around a little. I mean, I just want to make sure I crossed out the stuff that-
We have a second.
Not yet?
Second.
There we go.
Second.
I thought you were in a second, Dan. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, let's, uh, any discussion? Why don't you take us through them, Counselor Hoyt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have item 3.1A, the July 12th, 2021 draft city council minutes. 3.2A, amendments to the Parks, Water, and Wastewater System Development Charge eligible projects list. We have item, sorry, 3.3C, intergovernmental agreement with Marion County for Mobile Crisis Response Team Services. 3.3D, city lease of storage space in Turner, Oregon. 3.3E, reappointment of Ronald Hallowell as municipal court judge. 3.3F, local government agency agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for improvements at the State Street and 25th Street intersection. Item 3.3J, project request to begin design activities for the replacement of city water line in Hay, in Hayesville Drive Northeast from Nambill Drive Northeast to west of Happy Drive Northeast. 3.3H, local government agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for signal upgrades on Commercial Street Southeast, Southeast, between Madrona Avenue Southeast and Robbins Lane Southeast. 3.3I, local agency agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for traffic signal improvements in the downtown area. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Sorry, thank you. Counselor, any discussion? Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. Um, uh, just two, one comment and then one question. My comment is, it was kind of interesting on the stuff that we approved on various traffic improvements, that one of them says, I think it's on 25th and State Street, it will help pedestrian safety. And then another one we approved, I think it's downtown, says it will, uh, uh, help car safety. And I think those are kind of incongruous. Pedestrians are never safe when there are cars around. My question is, relates to the Bushes Park Plan, which is a terrific plan. I think it's great. And I hope Director Fernandez is here because one of the, my constituents indicated there was some concern that there might be trees planted in the open area between the barn and High Street. And I know the director answered that, but I cannot find the answer in my plethora of emails. So, uh, I wonder if you could respond to that, uh, question, uh, Mr. Fernandez?
Well, that's not, uh, thank you, Counselor Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. The, the thought, because it wasn't even a proposal, the, the thought that we might plant street trees along High Street, uh, was an idea that, uh, that's under a different program. It's not under that, uh, that plan. That's why you won't see it in the plan. Interestingly enough, the neighbors of that section of High Street do not want street trees planted on the street, even though we have a program that calls for it. So it'll be interesting to see as we move our street, street tree planting program, to see what other neighbors may not want trees. So that's going to create a very interesting dilemma for us in the future. I hope we don't have that.
Well, some councilors will have a dilemma here, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Anyone else on any of these issues? Okay, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll go then to a public hearing.
The city will now conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony concerning Ordinance Bill 621 relating to city real property interests proposing new regulations for City of Salem real estate transactions. The hearing will begin with staff presentation, and there are no individuals that are signed up to speak. Thank you.
Okay, they'll open that public hearing on 21-316, and who's staff for this? Dan, is it?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm giving a short presentation. Since there's no, uh, testimony or written comment, I'll be brief, and feel free to interrupt me when you'd like. Go ahead and try to share my screen here. Okay, are you seeing that okay?
No.
Oh, that's a shame. How about now?
There you go.
All right, thank you. So, um, we're proposing a new chapter to the Salem Revised Code. It will be Chapter 20K. It's regarding city real estate transactions, other transactions that the city is doing, whether it's a sale or an acquisition. So, uh, Oregon law establishes, uh, policies and procedures that local governments need to follow for real estate transactions, um, unless they have their own policy. The city already has a policy, was established at, at the staff level in 1987, and it hasn't been updated since. So we're doing some updates to that. We're keeping it essentially the same. The city attorney and, and the city's real estate services manager, Clint Dameron, and I, uh, worked together to put this policy together. It's been a couple of years in the making, and had to be on the back shelf for a while as we got through other issues. One of the, the, the big parts of this is the state law requires, uh, the city to establish classes of types of transactions that require and do not require a public hearing before the city council before you execute those contracts. Uh, currently, SRC Chapter 2, uh, delegates authority to the city manager to conduct a number of these types of transactions without a hearing or council approval. Uh, the proposed ordinance brings over those exceptions, if you want to call them that, into this new chapter with a few minor changes. Uh, it doesn't change that authority. It just keeps it the same. The city manager authority currently in the code and will be retained in the new code allows acquisition of property for streets, trails, and utilities, but only if the funding for the acquisition has been authorized in the approved city budget. Allows us to accept donations of land or release, uh, city-held easements that aren't needed for public use any longer. Also allows us to grant easements if the easement won't interfere, uh, with the public use. Um, allows us to, uh, do leases of city-owned property. Currently, we have, uh, approved lease templates, and as long as that template doesn't change, we don't need council approval. Oftentimes, though, the, the rate is set through a council resolution such as airport leases. In other instances, we need to come back to council to get approval because the, the rate hasn't been set by council. to come back to council to get approval because the, the rate hasn't been set by council. Uh, the one change, um, in this ordinance would allow the city manager to execute that lease and determine what a fair market rate would be. And as long as that rate is at or around fair market, we don't need to come back to council approval on that. Uh, permits of entry are, are sort of light easements. Their temporary uses of land of city-owned property oftentimes for a construction project will, uh, grant a permit to someone who's doing, uh, street improvements or street or improvements adjacent to the street. Um, and then execution of reconveyances. Oftentimes, we loan money for improvements on buildings, we'll take a trustee back to secure that. Um, many times we might subordinate our interest, um, to a primary loan, or we may be able to reconvey our interest in the trustee once the loan is paid off. This allows the, the city manager to do that without council approval. Um, in the 1987 policy, there's a, a myriad of different, uh, procedures and types of, uh, disposition. So if we're going to do a fixed, uh, bid, if we're going to use different types of ways of marketing the property, it, it has a, a set of those that we can choose from. That, that type of, uh, administrative policy is, is better left to an administrative rule and not to the code. So we're going to be following up, uh, this ordinance if it passes, uh, with, um, administrative rules that establish those. At this point, it, it's left to the city manager's discretion, along with the, the real estate manager advising on what the best method of disposition is. Uh, council will still, uh, be asked to approve the sales price in terms of sale unless that, uh, acquisition is exempt from the council approval process, as I talked about above. It updates our acquisition, uh, policies for relocation benefits under federal and state law, where required to provide relocation benefits, uh, when we acquire a property. This just makes us more consistent with federal law, also requires us to conduct due diligence prior to acquiring a property. And, uh, for price requires an appraisal for acquisitions of more than a hundred thousand. Um, but at under a hundred, at a hundred thousand or less, we can rely on, on the opinion of qualified staff, uh, for the, uh, the acquisition price. Um, uh, if, uh, a council is liking what the ordinance looks like, second reading is on the agenda for later tonight. Um, and we can pass it there and it'll be in effect in 30 days later. Um, otherwise, if council has questions or would like changes to the ordinance, you can let us know what those changes are and we can make them and bring them back to you for consideration at a later date. We're all, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, is, are there any questions for the city attorney on this? Okay, I'm going to, uh, close the public hearing. Counselor Hoy, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move city council advance ordinance bill number 6-21 establishing procedures for the city's acquisition and disposition of interest in land to the second reading for enactment.
Second.
Second by Lewis. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, if the, oop, sorry, Counselor Lewis.
Just real quick, um, the idea that you don't have to get city council approval to issue a record, uh, adieu of reconveyance makes a whole lot of sense to me. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, uh, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, I'm going to open a public hearing on 21-325. Uh, city recorder?
Yes, the city council will now conduct a public hearing concerning amendment number five to the 2019 annual action plan for community develop, development block grant funds. The hearing will begin with the staff presentation and no individual signed up to testify.
Okay. Who is our staff person here?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's Tiffany Otis.
Hi Tiffany.
Hi, I'll be setting up my shared screen now.
Okay.
Can you indicate if you see it, please?
No. Now you can, yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bennett and Council. My name is Tiffany Otis, Federal Programs Manager in the Urban Development Department. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to hear and comment on the proposed amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. Currently, the city has a five-year consolidated plan, which outlines the city's priorities and goals. This is year two of the consolidated plan, and these are the identified priorities. Part of the consolidated plan requires that each year, an annual action plan is created to identify what activities will take place within that program year. Here is a refresher. It required public notice announcing the 2019 amendment number five to the annual action plan appeared in the Statesman Journal, July 19, 2021. The public comments received and the responses will be documented. To date, one comment from the public has been received. I'm going to present Plan Amendment Number Five, 2019 Annual Action Plan. This amendment process is to provide the allocation of $860,354 in the CARES Act CDBG CV3 funds, $172,070 to program administration, $436,000 to emergency rental utility and mortgage debriefers to three community partners, $52,000 to mental and physical health services for the unhoused population, $200,000 in support services to childcare providers in the community, and lastly, allocate 197,474,000 to the Salvation Army for rental assistance and case management from previously unallocated 2019 CDBG entitlement funds. 2020 has been an irregular year for our community and continued into 2021. It cast shadows onto a lot of areas we never anticipated. These allocations of the CDBG CV3 funds were specifically selected via the regular CDBG required procedures, as well as the COVID tieback requirements, which are prepare, prevent, and respond to COVID that HUD implemented on top of the normal process. Through these filters, the selected programs and activities will assist the community partners to provide a much-needed lift to the community members. Many residents have fallen behind in their bills due to extended time of job loss, loss of daycare services that closed, and resources that are needed in order to reopen to assist the parents that are returning to work, and finally, offering a continuation of medical and mental health services to our unhoused neighbors. Federal program staff recommends funding the following five programs for the CDBG CV3 funds and one program via reallocation of the 2019 CDBG funds. Those are the St. Francis Shelter, Island Boy Camp, Northwest Human Services, JD Health and Wellness, Early Learning Hub of Marion and Polk County with Cooperative Community Action Agency Assistance, and the Salvation Army of Marion and Polk Counties. All of these programs are aimed to target the four goals and priorities mentioned earlier. Some of these programs you are already familiar with. I will highlight the new programs and projects. JD Health and Wellness is a family-owned and operated ballistic approach medical and mental health clinic. They have an established relationship with Union Gospel Mission, as well as Arches Program, to assist the unhoused men and women that access the shelters. Through this union, they have applied for funds for case management, the rehab of an HVAC system, purchase of PPE, and no-touch water systems. Marion and Polk Early Learning Hub is in a cooperative agreement with the Mid-Wilamette Valley Community Action Agency to assist daycare providers to start up a new business, provide equipment for existing businesses, or support the existing business to reopen their doors. These daycare businesses will serve the low-to-moderate income families by providing childcare as parents return to the workforce. Next steps. The next steps include the HUD reviewing and approving this annual action plan amendment, then entering into agreements with our program partners, followed by program implementation. Seeing the environmental reviews and subrecipient agreements developed and executed, the target date to implement these projects is approximately mid-October. Creating the amendments for the AAP additional home funds is on our agenda. In the very near future, to the amendment of the 2021 Annual Action Plan to be presented for $2.3 million in home funds to be received as a result of the American Rescue Plan Act, we are anticipating HUD's direction soon. And finally, staff will be monitoring the program administration and reporting back to council and the public as programs end. This concludes the presentation of the 2019 Annual Action Plan Amendment Number Five. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Very good. Uh, Counselor Lewis?
Yes, if we could go back to the slides real quickly to the, uh, the list of the four goals. Thank you. And, uh, this is not a criticism at all. It's just a, a question. The seven allocations that are listed on the next page, can you explain to me how they promote economic development?
The Early Learning Hub of Marion and Polk County are looking to institute for new childcare development centers. So there's some economic development for potential new programs starting and new staff.
So Counselor, if I could also, um, address this, this is Kristin Rutherford, the Urban Development Director. The goals within our five-year consolidated plan are goals that we target on an annual basis throughout the entire five years. That doesn't mean that we have to, with every allocation, hit each of those targets. So, uh, within the five-year plan, promoting economic development was the lowest priority, um, when that plan was developed and adopted. And as we go through our annual allocations each year, we have a target to, to address that goal within that five-year window.
Kristin, could you explain, uh, how economic development figured into the past four or five years of our plan? It seemed to me that that was at the top of the list there for a long time.
Absolutely. Yeah, you, you remember correctly. So in, so this five-year plan we adopted one year ago. In our previous five-year plan, um, economic development had been the number one goal in the prior five-year plan coming out of the Great Recession. And then about a year before we hit the 2020, so it was either 2018 or 2019, we amended our five-year consolidated plan to shift those priorities because we had hit so many of the economic development targets, largely through, uh, funding programs through merit and micro enterprise, um, allocations, uh, to help, uh, lower to moderate income businesses. Um, and we were seeing the shift from, okay, the economy is doing much better now, but we're seeing tremendous challenges with homelessness and affordable housing that we weren't experiencing, um, at the beginning of the last five-year consolidated plan. So council, we brought that back to council. Council amended the previous five-year consolidated plan to elevate ending homelessness and affordable housing so that we could allocate, um, more funding and prioritize that. And then, uh, then as we developed our latest, this 2020-24 consolidated plan, based on the community input that we received, homelessness and affordable housing rose to the top as priorities.
Okay. Are there any further, uh, questions? Okay, again, Tiffany and Kristin, thank you very much. Uh, I'm going to, uh, close the public hearing. Counselor Hoy? Do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move city council adopt amendment number five to the 2019 Annual Action Plan and direct staff to submit required forms to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
Thank you.
Are we ready for a roll call?
I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead and I, I apologize.
Oh, no problem. Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. Uh, I'd like to take about a five-minute break before we go into the, um, uh, special orders of business. So if you'll just, uh, give us five minutes, we'll be right back. special orders of business. So if you'll just give us five minutes, we'll be right back. And let's see, make sure everybody's here. Okay, great. Let's, let's just move ahead. Counselor Stapleton, you're on.
All right, thank you so much. Well, with a strong voice and boldly taking up all of the space that I need, I moved a direct staff to implement a hard closure of Union Street Northeast and Winter Street Northeast, consistent with Option Two, as set forth in July 12, 2021, information report on this subject.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
Thank you so much. Oh, well, we've had several opportunities to talk about this as a council. It's been up several times now, and I'm really looking forward to bringing this to a final vote and having a really robust conversation today about what's going to be right for our community. So as you know, this idea builds out on a lot of our different goals that we have set and initiatives that we've started. And from investing in our communities and our neighborhoods to supporting small local businesses and addressing climate change. So when I thought about these two different options, I had to take a moment to really picture what exactly was, was my goal here. And for me, I just had this moment of wanting to get my friends and meet up on the street and, and take a stroll to the, to the market with our kids riding ahead of us on their bikes and, you know, circling back and catching up with us and, and just really enjoying this great asset that our city has, not only in the Saturday market, but these wonderful neighborhood streets that we have and utilizing that asset in a way that we don't normally get to do. So I'm really hoping that these investments that we're making in our community will also help highlight the need for alternative modes of transportation and the importance of investing in our pedestrian and bike infrastructure. And I think that doing that will help bring this subject up and really bring it to the forefront. So I hope to open this up to many questions and concerns and comments from all of you and hope to bring this to a vote tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, I want to congratulate you on this. This was an issue that I began talking about when I was a city counselor from Org One. I know Counselor Kazer continued it, which is not this specific issue, but the broader issue that we'll be discussing also in a future, in a later motion of a family-friendly bike trail that connects the Northeast Salem community with Riverfront Park, which is really their close park. And I, what I want to mention, I think, is, is I think the work staff has done over the years. These tend to be, if anyone hasn't figured that out, we're starting to talk about eight or nine years ago, we started talking about this kind of thing, not quite this one, but, but this, this idea. I think you've augmented it quite a bit with this, but, and improved it. But that this does happen, it just takes time. And I just appreciate that the staff never drops these issues once we get them started and that we ultimately get to see them come forward. So I really, I'm really glad you took this idea and have really improved on it, I think, in this particular location. I hope your motion passes tonight. And if the neighbors, if you hear from the neighbors and you need to come back for a public hearing, I'll be glad to open that public hearing for you. Okay? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I hope the motion passes too. And I have to indicate that a lot of our discussion that we've already had tonight has focused on climate change and climate action. Gear Park is one of those. The other motion that Counselor Stapleton pulled about the intergovernmental agreement for the right of way on that street, that has something to do with it. So I think we need to start moving in the right direction, and this is going to be a wonderful thing for all the people of Salem. So I fully support it.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes, Counselor Stapleton, I, I actually had a lot of comments about how proud I was of your motion, but you, you've changed it on me. And so I, I'm going to make some other comments. And I, I'll put it as simply and quickly as I can. I believe that this, this motion is too restrictive. And I want to point out that the folks will now be barred from your neighborhood or your neighbors. And that the ones that would be allowed into the neighborhood with the soft closing are also your neighbors. Those would be the ones that would be using the street. So I, I'm more of a fan of sharing the road. And I, and I believe your, your first stab at the motion was the correct one. Unfortunately, I cannot support this one.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Do you want to close, Counselor Stapleton, or just take your chances? Oh, there, I guess Hoy heard me say we're going to close on this. Hoy, do you want to talk?
I certainly do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And I guess I just have more of a question, probably to Counselor Stapleton, maybe to staff. And I'm wondering what kind of outreach was done to the community to get feedback on this. I know Counselor Lewis expressed some concern about the hard closure as opposed to the soft closure. What do, what do the people who live there think?
Counselor Stapleton, I think that's directed.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out. I was watching Director Fernandez to see. So I will leave the outreach question to, to Mr. Fernandez. But from what I have heard, I haven't gotten any negative feedback on this from the neighbors in that area. And I have not heard from everybody, obviously. And I do want to address Counselor Lewis's questions as well. And, and I, and I think that they have merit, and I had those same concerns, of course. And I, I want to try this and see how it goes and know that if there is, you know, public frustrations or whatever it is, that I am open to hearing that. I want the public to know that. And I am open to adjusting things in the future. But I really want to start with going big and then cutting back if, if we need to and adjusting as we need to, to make sure that everybody is getting their needs met. And I do know that they do this in Portland, and you know, that is another concern that they have. And they do have folks who want to leave their house, but their road is closed. And of course, they just slowly go down the edge of the street and get off that closed street as soon as possible. So I think that it works with just a little common sense and patience and, and adjusting to something new. But just to know, counsel to know that I'm really open to seeing how this goes and making adjustments as needed.
Could, could you, Counselor, again, you didn't mention it in your motion, you referenced the Option Two, but what are the days you're talking, how many days a week and hours are you talking about?
Sure. It is just on Saturdays between nine and three, nine AM and three PM. And that's just when the Saturday market is open. And we're thinking May through October, which is really utilizing the best of our weather that we have in here in Salem.
Your lips to God's ears on that one, huh? Hey, who else? Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I hope Mr. Fernandez might take a stab at my question as well. I do also just want to give some positive feedback. I appreciate the going bold sentiment from Counselor Stapleton. I think that is the way to go. We can always adjust back. I have to say, I'm very jealous because to get to the Saturday market from my house, you have to either go over or go under I-5, you have to cross Lancaster. Neither of those are small fees for a family on a bike or anybody on a bike. And so I think it's anything that we can do to increase mobility in our, and livability in our city like this is great. And we certainly have the opportunity down in the core area, and I think we ought to capitalize on it. And I wish that we could do something more. I'm hoping to do something more from something clear out all the way from East Salem downtown to connect, maybe from the new development, State and Corden Road, or maybe just from somewhere else over here east to get all the way across town. Some sort of a bike facility that lets you do that in a safe way. So anyway, congratulations.
Mr. Fernandez, did you want to comment?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. In response to Counselor Hoy's question, we really have not done any outreach to the neighbors or the businesses. I believe Mr. Hotman spoke to at least one business owner who he invited to come down to council tonight to testify. Obviously, he did not. But I think Kevin, Kevin is on, and he can correct me if he spoke to more than, than one or two people.
Well, I think, do you, do you hear, I, I'm just curious, your reaction then. Counselor Stapleton is saying, as this develops, it's often hard to just get the word out, even with a mailing into the closest people with 250 feet from the location. It's hard to get the word out, but that the experience may well bring people to the table, contacting her as well as the rest of us, and that she's prepared to respond to, to those kind of concerns. That's what I, I heard, Counselor. Did I hear you right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Yes, Counselor Nordike?
Hi, thank you, folks. And I'm, I'm joining a little late in the conversation. I didn't make it quite back in time when we started the conversation. So my, my general thoughts, I would like to know how many of the 11 businesses that are identified in this report as being affected. The report simply says it is unclear how many are open on Saturdays. So I mean, that's a natural question of mine that I don't think any of us have an answer to. And yeah, per, as Counselor Hoy mentioned, I always am curious to hear what the residents have to say. All that being said, I'm all in favor of pilot projects.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we shouldn't let perfect be getting in the way of trying something new. And frankly, when you try something new, that's when you're really going to get the public input. That's when you can transition to the what-ifs and what would happen. And oh, dear God, what happens if we change something to, oh, it wasn't as bad as I thought? Or, you know, maybe this wasn't such a, I mean, I don't know. None of us truly know. So I'm all in favor of giving it a shot. Let's, but I would suggest let's make it a pilot project and revisit it after we have had opportunity for input. I'm open to that idea. We don't have to make a vote that lasts forever and ever. Not every vote should last forever and ever. So I applaud Counselor Stapleton for bringing it forward, and I look forward to hearing more.
Counselor Stapleton, on that, in that vein, maybe we, I, I hope you'll come back. You know, if this goes for the rest of the summer, maybe through August, and kind of let us know how it go. September changes things a lot, but, but I think hearing from you on how it went, what kind of reaction you've gotten, we'll hear from Mr. Fernandez, and then we'll get email as well. So.
Yeah.
From you how it goes.
Yeah, and as it goes, I plan on, you know, reporting back during council comments just to, that you guys know how it went. Feedback from the Saturday market, of course, would be good as well. And I did want to let you guys know, I talked to staff about, one of the big concerns was that the Gilbert House would, and the entrance to the Riverfront Park would be affected. And so I have asked staff to move the road closure across that street. And maybe, Peter, you can help paint that picture a little bit better than I can, just to ensure that there is no confusion that the park is closed at all. We don't want that. Or that access to the Gilbert House is, is open as well. So.
Commercial, or where, where are you then closing from commercial?
Is that Front Street? I'm sorry, I'm asking.
Yeah, we can close from, from, from Front Street. There probably, it makes sense. We could close the, the access to the park. I mean, you can certainly access the park through the PGE parking lot. I think that would be additional confusion.
Yeah, so in, in order to, to get away from that and just make sure that everybody knows that the park is open, the, the closure would, would start across that first intersection right there at the, at the park there on, in between Marion Square Park, right there. And my other concern to be, you know, really fully open with you all is that, that Liberty, that light on Liberty and Union is not in yet. And that is a safety concern for me personally, and one that I brought up with staff. So I asked pretty, pretty please, can we get that light sooner rather than later? And of course, that's not how projects work. And so that's going to be happening at the end of next year. So that is a concern that I have and something that I'll be paying really close attention to.
So from Front Street to where? Winter?
Winter on, yes.
On Union, it will be closed from what time?
Market, from Market down to Union on Winter Street.
Market to Union?
Well, there's two, Mayor, Counselor, by May, there's, there's two pieces to the closure. There's Union Street from Front Street to Winter, and Winter Street.
Okay, right, I'm sorry.
To Union. So it's the two axes coming into the, the Saturday market.
Will this allow local traffic only, Counselor? In other words, if I live on Winter Street, you actually have a residential street there. Actually, quite a bit of residential street. Will I be able to turn off Market and go to my home?
From what I understand how it works in Portland, when I researched their program, the street is closed, but yet if you have a, if your car is parked there and you need to get off of the street, of course you can. And from what I understand, likewise, coming home to your residence is also fine. But it does, of course, alert people that things are different and helps slow them down and, and make them more conscious about what's happening around them. So.
But I'm coming down Market Street, and I live on Winter Street, or I, how do I, can I get to my home during those hours? Are you closing me off? I'm just trying to understand.
Yes. And from what I understand, how it works in Portland is that the street is closed, but folks can, can access their own homes.
So we can do local access, Mr. Fernandez, on Winter Street?
Well, Mayor, we can do whatever the council wants us to do. The hard.
Under this motion.
That described it, you would not have access to the.
So those people will be cut off.
That's what a hard closure implies. The way we would probably design it is, in fact, I think the way Kevin has drawn it is that you would be able to get out, but you wouldn't be able to get back. Legally, you would not be able to get back in. Now.
How you understand it, Counselor? That's what you want to do is cut off? You, you know what we're talking about. That's, that's quite, particularly down to D and really a little further south, but, but that whole section is residential down Winter to D, as I recall.
Yes. And, and my question for staff really is, you know, have we at all looked at how Portland is doing theirs? Is there's a hard closure? Or do they have local access only?
No, Counselor, Portland does the soft closure, the Option One.
Okay, I was under the understanding that they did the hard closure.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I was under the impression that they did the hard closure?
No, my understanding is that they do the soft closures, the Option One. And that's how people are able to get in and out of their property. So the hard closure provides an absolute closure. Now, the reality is, is they're not going to be staffed. So people can certainly get around the barricades and can move barricades to get in and out. It will be laid out so that people can get out. But, but in theory, if they're following the law, they would not be able to get back in.
What do you think, Counselor Stapleton?
I would love to hear from Counselor Anderson, if that's okay.
He doesn't live on Winter Street. Oh, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. I think Director Fernandez said an important thing that really is going to be recognized and that he said was, someone who lives there legally could not get back to their, their home. Well, I have to tell you, if I was a city councilor, but just a lawyer in private practice, I think I would love to defend somebody who got charged with driving to their home. I think as a practical matter, that's not going to happen. People who, who need to leave from their home will need to come back, and, and they'll do it in the proper way. And that's part of the, of the whole idea about this is a pilot project. We'll see if that's a problem, and I don't think it will be a problem at all.
Why, why can't we have local access only? That seems to work, or is that Option One? I, I'm trying to understand this, why?
No, I, I, I think local access only really pertains to the home, the people who have homes there, not to someone who's driving through because they want to go on some. uh, someone who's, uh, driving through because they want to go on to someplace on the other side, further south on Winter Street.
I agree. It's it's. Means you live there.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we don't have that under this motion, right, or do we?
I I for my, from my point of view as a practical matter, I don't think we need it, but, uh, if, yeah, for the reasons I just said. And I would presume.
You'll defend me or anyone else that that is trying to get home?
I don't know if I would defend you, Chuck, but I'll defend somebody else. No. Uh, and I think, I think Director Fernandez, you just put up local access signs there when when you shut it off. You know, if if I don't know that we need a council motion to make that that explicit, that to me seems almost like an administrative thing rather than a a policy thing.
Well, I don't know. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my understanding, and I'm just sharing my perspective here. A hard closure means no cars. A soft closure means no cars except those who live there. That's my, that's my understanding of the difference, which is a soft closure allows you to get to and from your residence. But a hard closure means no cars, period. That's my, and I understood the motion to be no cars, period, but that's not what I'm hearing from my colleague from Ward One. So I'm hearing a little bit of two different things. So clarification would be awesome.
Thanks, Tom. Okay. Um, so, thank you. And and my concern also with the soft closure is that the bus would still continue to be on this route as well, and that's a concern for me. Um, it's kind of interesting. I think a lot of people put active transportation with public transportation, um, thinking that they go together. Um, but in my thinking, they really don't, um, because there's nothing more intimidating than having, uh, your bike or your kid next to you and having a bus coming at you, let alone a car. Um, so with option one, the bus would still be on, um, on Winter Street, which concerns me. Um, and from what I understand, the difference is going to be the signage. Um, the hard closure is going to be the actual barricade that goes across the center of the street um, to where with the soft closure, it's going to be, uh, local access only signs um, and much smaller signs at that, um, which I'm not sure is going to really deter folks who are not a local, uh, to go down these streets. So I I guess that's where I'm at on that.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I intend to support, uh, Counselor Stapleton's motion. 1% because our our family had a booth there for several years. And one thing is just enjoying the, enjoying it as a customer. But carrying, carrying things across, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a nightmare. 99% of the reason I'm going to support this is to support Counselor Stapleton. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Phillips?
Um, I think I'm in support of it. Uh, we may have to add signs that say local access to the more permanent barriers. I might eventually want to move towards like a 1.5, but I'm willing to support option two as is. My question is, um, when will this go into effect? If if we pass this tonight, like, when do, when does the rubber meet the road?
Uh, Counselor, we will need about, uh, two weeks. We're going to order some more Type 3 barricades and get the crews lined out. So we would anticipate, uh, that it wouldn't be this Saturday, but it would be a week from Saturday.
Mr. Fernandez, will you be putting up signs notifying these streets that they'll be closing on a date certain? During these hours? With some sort of notice that says?
I, we really hadn't planned on it. I mean, um.
Just get people ready? I mean, at least have a plan?
You know, the.
Clean their alley or something? That is one thing most of these folks have is a back alley. I think all of them do have an alley in back. So there is access.
Yeah, is there, is there any way that we could, you know, send a flyer to these folks? Um, since we have two weeks, um, is there some way we could send a flyer to them, letting them know of of the motion and and what the intent is and?
Certainly can.
I'm a big fan of overcommunication, if at all possible. And Trevor, I love your 1.5. That was hilarious and awesome and, um, and like I told the rest of the council, I am open to making adjustments as this goes and and hearing feedback from everybody and and just really flexible on this.
So maybe, Mr. Fernandez, would part of this include you maybe making some contact at least in those on on Winter Street uh, where we've got a substantial residential impact? Uh, letting them know what's happening? Union too, if you know who the residents are.
Well, we'll just, I mean, we can certainly just send, just mail out notice to the address, the resident.
Yeah, just let them know what's happening and.
Letting them know that the council has has adopted this and on, uh, on this date, this is what's going to happen, and it's going to continue until, you know, a date certain, till the end of, uh, the end of September.
Okay. It's kind of after the fact, but, oh, well. Are you going to put in Stapleton's phone number, or how are you going to handle that part?
Well, if she wants us to.
I'm kidding. I am kidding. Okay. Everybody ready? If the, uh, recorder, please call the roll.
I, I, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry because I had stepped.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vanessa. I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry.
No worries. Can we restate the, uh, the motion before council? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so I moved to direct staff to implement a hard closure of Union Street Northeast and Winter Street Northeast, consistent with option two, as set forth in the July 12th, 2021 information report on this subject.
Do you need a motion for a flyer, Peter? Do you need her to add that to her motion?
You know, Mayor, it would not hurt to include that in the motion.
Put that in your motion and we'll get you to okay it.
Can I just add another sentence?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and also have staff, uh, communicate with the letter to affected groups within the area.
Okay. Who's the second on this? Anderson, you okay?
I accept that amendment.
Great. Okay. Now we'll call the roll, okay?
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
No.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. What, let me see what I got here. Just a sec. I think it's you, Anderson, but I got to see which which one is it's first.
Uh, 3.8.
2A?
Yeah, 3.38.
3A?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Gear Park, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank.
I move the council approve the revised update for the Gear Master, Gear Park Master Plan with the following amendments. Uh, low, uh, ha, only at 40 parking spaces, including ADA spaces, and add enhanced public transportation facilities.
Second.
Second by Stapleton?
Um, I really appreciated the comments of Mr. Carver, and I will also tell you that I happen to be on the Climate Action Task Force along with, uh, Councillors, uh, Nordike and Gonzalez. And this is a serious problem, and I think Ms. Buell was was right. You know, we've got to start doing something now and not wait till 20 years from now, but I also don't think we want to go and say, let's just ban all additional parking. But I was, uh, impressed by 221 spaces that are already there, and I came upon the figure of 40, just kind of as we know that 53% of the, uh, greenhouse gas emissions in our city come from transportation. Now, this is is just going to reduce it by 1%. I don't know. It's not going to reduce it all. May, maybe not. But we've got to start taking, we've got to start taking steps. And so, uh, uh, I took 53% of 70, and that's about 40. So that's, that's how I came up to that pitch, that number.
Great, thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I would like to thank staff for, uh, listening to my feedback and increasing the size of the dog park. I'm very happy to see that, and I know that many residents in my part of town will, uh, be equally thankful for that. So I specifically want to thank Mr. uh, Romanek for his hearing me and hearing, uh, the feedback, and I think that's going to be a great asset. Now, as to the parking spaces, I'm a little bit concerned about Counselor Anderson's mo, uh, kind of addendum to his motion, but I'm equally concerned. Sorry, I'm getting a notice that my mind is unstable again. I hope you can hear.
You're okay now. You're okay.
Uh, I'm equally concerned with what appears to be an arbitrary number of parking spaces that we have and that we're going to be added. So while I'm concerned about the counselor's kind of arbitrary number, I'm also concerned that it was based on a a staff arbitrary number that we don't really seem to know what, how many parking spaces we need. And that that bothers me, and I wish that we had a little bit more data behind our parking in our parks. So I'm not clear, I mean, I'm not clear how to vote on this. Uh, I I think the, maybe the the motion is a little bit too detailed, but yet we've got to, we've got to change things somehow. And so it's probably our best option at this point to do that, but I wish that we could not be arbitrary on these parking spaces.
Mr. Fernandez, do you have any comments on the parking? I see, uh, Rob has joined us. What, uh, what are we? Is there something going on here that answers, Counselor Hoy?
Yeah, Mayor, I think it'd be best if Mr. Romanek would, uh, uh, would 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 just get into a little bit of the details of how, uh, how they came up with the parking numbers.
Yeah, good evening. Um, thank you, Mayor and and Councillors. Just real briefly, very quickly, um, just a little background there. So are, we do have a consultant assisting the city with this project, that the landscape architecture firm out of Portland called Greenworks. And they they develop parks as a good chunk of their business. So they do lots of this for other communities all across the Oregon. And so we are relying on their professional expertise to provide recommendations based on the proposed new uses. Um, when when those recommendations came to us, uh, we were concerned that they were too high, uh, given the fact there's already some parking there. So in the previous version of the update that we provided you, we reduced it. Um, and and there there was no, uh, formula used for that. That's correct. And then, uh, and then tonight before you again, we further reduced it, uh, with a focus on making sure that that one, we're providing, you know, enough spots that we feel like we're 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 doing what we need to for uses that are for families, you know, specifically the playground and the splash pad. Um, but also listening to you and and providing, following your feedback in terms of reduction. Um, so what we have presented to you is a concept that includes a first phase of new parking that would not be developed right away. It would come years from now, and that would be 35 stalls. And then later, if required, uh, we could add an additional 35 stalls because the master plan doesn't include up to 70.
Why did you not include pullouts? Why did you exclude pullouts?
Yeah, we did. We did not remove pullouts. We we, when we refigured the parking lot, we did change their shape and they are smaller. Their intent is to serve, um, non-commercial, um, non-public transit vehicles. Uh, the are, the local public transit prefers not to have pullouts in the park, so so that would be handled elsewhere.
They asked you not to put it in the park?
Yes, we we have, uh, we have, not only that, on on public streets, they don't want pullouts as well. Um, they they would really prefer to block the traffic and allow the the vehicle, allow the folks to safely get on.
Well, that's much better.
Yeah, well, that's what that that, we work with them and that's their preference. So so, you know, if if we want to have pullouts, they they simply say no, thank you.
So, so really, Counselor Anderson, putting in pullouts is really not what they want. They want to have, they want to have the existing system they have, which is if they decide to develop a stop at Gear Park because of rider demand or however they make their decisions, they will just use existing right of way for that. Do I understand that?
Right, and Mayor, if I may, and they will, they will typically install the bus stop as well. That is their, that is responsibility.
That's their job.
Yeah.
So does that change your thoughts at all on this, Tom?
Well, yes and no. I mean, the, the, and I was on the Lane Transit Board of Directors for a number of years, so I'm a little familiar with this, and what I think Mr. Romanek is saying is, I agree with the, it's better to stop traffic because you get, it's more safety, but that's not a public street. A part of, you know, bus pullouts, well, I don't know if they would be internal to the park, but they might end up being in the parking lot or someplace else. Uh, I I would note that, and I thank you very much for this, Mr. Romanek. The first phase was supposed to be 40, uh, 35, and I went to 40. So I think that's consistent. You know, let's, let's cap it at 40 now, and we can have the first phase at 35, and if it's showing that we need more, uh, the staff can come back to us.
So you're okay with the pullouts, whether the chariots want it or not?
Well.
Which they apparently don't.
If the chariots don't want it, then I think the staff just comes back to us and says that. And if, in fact, if Rob can tell us they don't want to now. Right, if Rob tells us that, then I'm I'm happy to remove the 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 pullouts. Um, uh, you know, the real issue here is can we get bus transportation to the park? Not, not, yeah, as much as we can. And I cannot remember if I I I wrote down, uh, the 40 would include ADA spaces, and I think that was in my motion. If not, uh, oh, Director Fernandez is done. They said, okay, okay, good.
Yeah. Counselor Hoy? I know you have a lot, I know there are a lot of hands up. Just real quick for for clarity. Uh, chariots has had a longstanding practice of not servicing private property. I think for a while they were going into, uh, the old Lancaster Mall. And and they don't do that anymore. They like to stay on public streets. There are two public streets out there, uh, uh, Gear Drive, which will be finished at some point, of course, Park Avenue or Park Road. So so there would be opportunities for transit to serve uh, uh, the park at that point, uh, but they won't come into the parking lot at all. So so just for for clarity's sake. And then and then real quickly, on ADA, whatever we put in, we have a requirement. There's a, there's a local law and a state law, so so the the appropriate ADA spaces will be installed regardless of how many spaces go in.
Okay, Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question, uh, I comment in the question is that, you know, when I was served on the Transit Committee that we had created a number of years ago, that's been their longstanding practice is to not not want pullouts. They don't, they don't find them to be helpful. And actually, they find them to be, uh, unhelpful. So, um, but Mr. Fernandez made reference to Park Avenue. I'm curious, and I've heard, I think I've heard him mentioned before that perhaps that was going to become a public street all the way through to Center Street. Is that actually going to happen? And if so, uh, so I'm seeing a head shake, so that is not going to happen?
I'm sorry, no, but please finish your question, Counselor. I apologize. This is the problem with Zoom.
I've got a lot of problems with Zoom tonight. So my question is, is that likely to happen, which would give them the option to come close to the park? And if not, have we considered a path, and this is more from Mr. Romanek, have we considered a path that would allow more direct, uh, pedestrian access to a bus stop?
So so in answer to your first question, we are, uh, we are working with the state of Oregon to make, uh, and I forget whether it's avenue, road, street, park, uh, public, certainly in the park that, in the part that's in the park. Uh, I do not believe that they, that the rest of park is through there, is through the state hospital's parking lot. We have a permanent easement, so so people can, uh, motorists can traverse through there. By extension, uh, chariots buses could certainly traverse through there because the easement, uh, is in place. Uh, so so at some point, if offered, we will accept park, uh, the piece that's in the park as, uh, as public. And like I said, we would also have gear. Uh, with respect to, uh, walkways, uh, we we do have walkways, uh, in the Park Master Plan, and we are actively working with the state hospital to have some kind of walkway, if not straight north, certainly to the west. So that it would go around, I I believe it's called Recovery Road. Then, and then, of course, the state installed the, uh, walkway off of Illinois years ago because, and that's where, that's where the, at the existing part of the park is the access, and and the Oregon State Hospital would prefer that pedestrians not walk through the parking lot, but actually walk through the neighborhood and come in, uh, off of that walkway to Illinois.
Okay. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you. I support reducing parking to 40 spots. Um, what I would like to see, though, if we do succeed in reducing parking of 40 spots, I would like to really prioritize ADA spots among those. And another thing I would consider, because I've seen this on public, in public transit, there are spots that where they incentivize or they encourage parking for those who have mobility issues, parking for seniors and other things. You can do that through signage and the honor system to incentivize park users who do decide to drive to the park to think, oh, maybe I shouldn't park right in front of the baseball diamond. Maybe I should park a few, you know, a few spaces away so that the seniors in our area or those who have other mobility issues. so that the seniors in our area or those who have other mobility issues can access the spots who truly cannot get there except in some sort of vehicle. Um, I'm also very much supportive of pedestrian options, cycling friendly paths, you know, the more the merrier. I would certainly favor that. I'm also very much supportive of more tree canopy, especially if we reduce the parking to forty. Having more tree canopy where those parking spots otherwise would be. All those things get us one step closer to meeting our greenhouse gas emission goals and that matters. I also think this conversation is a really good testament to how important it is to have good relationships with folks like our chariots, our public transit options. I'm hearing a lot of secondhand information about what chariots wants and doesn't want. What's feasible? Can they do pullouts, uh, and so on? I myself have had a conversation, uh, very briefly with the Chair of the Chariots Transit Board. And there, they can't, they can't currently have a bus stop right at the park because you've got a, a really, really big bus and trying to turn it around, the sheer feasibility of that is a challenge. It seems like the closest you could get, based on my conversation with, uh, Board Chairman Davidson, is that you could get point three miles within the park, which is not, it's not at the park, but point three miles. If we do that, plus we have pedestrian safe crossings. If we have a place that feels safe, that would really go a long way towards making sure that people can use the park. Thank you.
Counsel Stapleton.
Thank you so much. Um, yeah, I, I too had some conversations, um, with Ian Davidson about this, this as well. And I would say that I, um, trying to get the, the bus as close as possible, of course, is what we can do right now. Um, but I would love to see, of course, uh, funding and moving up the completion of Gear Drive, which would allow, uh, the bus to come right through there and drop people off right at the park. Um, and so I would love to see that happen. Um, of course, everybody would in the near future. Um, I do support the forty, um, parking spots. I know a lot of folks want us to not have any. I, I don't think that that is, um, really feasible for our lifestyles right now. And I understand, um, that climate change is real and that it's something we have to do dramatic, um, investments in. But we also need folks to be able to get to this playground and to these, um, to these skate parks. And as a mom of two kids, I know, trucking across that, Gear Park is huge. Um, I know I have parked there and trucked into the bike. Um, I'm not sure what they call it, the bike track. Um, and that's a hike in and of itself. Um, so I support some parking over in this area off of park. And of course, it's just, it's so complicated without having, um, pedestrian access, um, through park, not, not having that right to put that in. So, um, I would also, I just had a couple of questions for staff. And, um, that is if we have thought at all about permeable surfaces for our parking lots and especially in these park areas. Is that something that we could do?
Yes.
That we would definitely consider. It's something that, uh, uh, it's a product that's available. We know it works. So it's just a matter of, uh, giving it a run when we, uh, when we actually go to construction.
Hey, did you have anything else, Virginia?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things. Um, is it more cost effective or is it going to, to take a, a larger chunk of money to do something like that?
It's, it's.
It's hard saying.
It's not worth talking about. The, 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 the cost differential isn't really an, an, an issue. So it's, it's really just, uh, the issues with permeable pavement really have more to do with long-term maintenance than with installation or how well they work to, uh, to accept, uh, stormwater.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
You have to keep it clean to keep it permeable, is that?
Exactly.
Mr. Ms. Romic, I, I had one question on something, uh, Ms. Varney said. And that was, uh, questions of equity informed your, uh, the numbers that came forward from, uh, from them in support of the staff position. What, what was found by the consultant and all of you who worked on this regarding, uh, equity-related issues? Uh, and, and this issue or any others you had?
Well, well, we're developing a park for everyone here. I'll say that. I mean, and, and so during this kind of extensive outreach process that we've had to, to lead up to this proposal for you tonight, um, the first thing we did is we interviewed some current park users. Um, and they.
Like who?
Uh, the, the Salem Area Trail Alliance. They're the group that helps maintain the, the bicycle pump track. And, and they, they shared their observations about the kinds of people that come to the park and utilize the facilities. And it seems like it was a really diverse group. And then so, so all along, we've, we've, we've been very careful that, that we're dealing with a broad group and we have to be inclusive, um, when we think about who we're preparing this park space for. And so, so just to briefly answer your question, we very much consider, you know, how will someone who lives in Northeast Salem get to this park? How will someone in South Salem get to this park? Because it is a community park. It's meant to serve a broad portion of the community. So, so we, we definitely keep that in, in our, in our thoughts as we, as we work on this project.
Yeah, I, I just, I'd like you to be a little more specific in terms of, did you consider, when you talk about equity terms? Uh, I am really concerned that this idea that we can tell people you can't come in your car is going to exclude a segment of society that, uh, we really don't want to exclude from use of this park. Is that what you talked about or did you not? I, I just don't know. I'm not familiar with it.
I have not had specific conversations with, with community members about that issue, uh, about.
How about your consultant? Did they say anything about it? They seemed to say something about equity. They caught Ms. Ms. Varney's attention.
Oh, I, I believe Ms. Varney was discussing the deliberations of SBRAB, not necessarily staff's work. Um, as an important clarification there. Um, so I don't know if that, that helps you at, at all to answer your question.
I feel like I'm not getting much of an answer on equity and how it fit into this thing. Mr. Fernandez, do you have any thoughts on that?
I don't think, uh, you know, we are just starting to develop our diversity, equity, inclusion, uh, plans and programs and, and, uh, and processes. So I, I don't believe that, uh, that the process that we use for Gear Park specifically addressed uh, equity issues beyond what Mr. Romanek is talking about, about the. So how people from different parts, because this is a community park, of people from, from the different communities would, would come and use it. But that, were we specifically addressing the issue the way, you know, through, through an equity lens or something like that? We don't have those kinds of, of tools developed yet.
But you're working on them.
Absolutely.
Would that help inform future decisions as you phased in parking places or phased out parking places?
You know, I don't really know the answer to that in mind.
I, I just intrigued me that it was part of the consideration. So. Uh, Counsel Lewis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I do want to thank Counsel Anderson for his attempt at what I see as a, as a compromise. I know that was not necessarily easy, especially with the, uh, the comments that we've, we've heard at this meeting and the last meeting. But, but I truly believe that the best compromise is the one that's being presented by the staff. I keep going back to the, uh, Parks Advisory Board, who has looked at this, been engaged, went through the process and has looked at it again and again. And quite frankly, what I'm hearing from them is ninety-four spaces is what the city should prepare for. None of the spaces are going to be built right away. You could always, as we're more successful in alternative modes of transportation, you could always remove parking or just not put it in. But when you limit the parking and down the road, you, you'd need it. Good luck.
Okay, are, are you, okay, Counsel Stapleton.
And just a quick clarification question. Um, the area where the parking, uh, was, was proposed, the seventy spaces, the compromise that staff came back with, that area has just been turned back into grass. Am I understanding that right? And, and the, it has shrunk down. And so in the future, if the park does grow, that space is there that we could turn that original allotment back or into parking, um, in, in twenty years, if we need that parking, that space is available. It's not turned into anything else. So there's not a play structure there. There's not, there's not a splash pad, nothing like that. It's just an open green space, correct?
That is correct. And, and the only caveat I will add is, is we may not be able to go to ninety-four stalls with the current layouts. So we, we do have opportunities, uh, beyond, even up to, beyond seventy to expand, um, but not necessarily to ninety-four.
Okay. And could you explain to me what that process would look like? Staff would just come and say, we're, we did a parking study. We have the data. We need more spaces and council, whatever council that is, would be able to approve that and, and funding would be spent and we would be able to have more parking. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
One, one other thing, Counsel, Mr. Fernandez, I wanted to follow up on a, on a comment from Counsel Anderson. I thought he had a really good point. I've gone to a lot of youth soccer and, uh, in a lot of these places, there's no parking except on some grass where they have overflow and part of the volunteer activity is putting people in lines on grass uh, to allow for that singular event of a lot of overflow. What's wrong with that idea? I, I, that made a lot of sense to me when I heard him say it.
Uh, yeah, uh, nothing. Uh, typically that's either, uh, you know, grass or, or some kind of hard scape that, uh, you know, either the ground is hard or whatever. Uh, so it could be that, you know, the Counselor Stapleton was talking about sort of this additional space. Uh, you know, if the soil is hard enough, then that could be used, you know, for overflow. Uh, neighborhood on the northeast side, people can park in the neighborhood on, on the street. People can. Level up on Park Avenue. People can, I mean, that's, that's typically what happens, right?
But I'm curious in this.
If we overflow something.
That's what Tom described, which is the sort of grass overflow area for those events that, that have sudden, uh, impact on, on the need for parking, because people are coming in from out of town or whatever the, the deal is. It sounds like there is a possibility for that then, under, under.
In that, in that green space that, that is there, if it is, if the soils are hard enough, then it can be used for that. If, if the soils are not hard enough, uh, then it's, uh, that's, it's a problem. I'm getting a, a, a note here from Patricia Farrell that code does, uh, our city code does not allow for overflow parking right now. So, so, so we couldn't do it formally. Uh, but you know, in, as you know, anytime you go to a place that overflows, informally, people will just park anywhere.
Yeah, I, I don't think that was quite the point. You, we actually have a code that says you can't do overflow or parking?
I, that's, that's what I'm being told.
Well, Tom, you got another challenge. Are you, are you going to be changing your motion, uh, a little bit in terms of the bus or any of that stuff?
Well, I, 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 I removed the bus. I'm not going to deal with the, with the code. I may at some point later on, city attorney. I, yeah, I mean, yeah, that's, you know, we're, we, we, we can't legislate for every potential possibility that might happen.
No, but we can have an opening. It's, it's legislating that you can't have a response to it, is what is struggling, I think.
Yeah.
So do you want to, uh, do you want to change your motion so we capture what you're after?
I mean, Mr. Mayor.
Let me, let me let him change it. So you're talking to his motion when he changes it, okay? Thank you.
Um, I move we accept the revised update to the Gear Park Master Plan with the amendment to add only forty new parking spaces, um, to the plan.
You don't want thirty-four in there. You want just forty.
Add forty, yeah. Forty would be better. I agree. To add forty new spaces to the plan. I'm taking out ADA because of what the director told us. I'm taking out, uh, bus pullouts because from what, uh, Mr. Romanek told us.
Okay, great. Second, is that okay with you, Virginia?
It works for me.
Okay. Counsel Phillips.
So, um, I have several questions. I'll try to remember them all in one pass, but I can't make any promises. Um, so looking at the two maps, I've got the, the map from the original ninety-four to this new, uh, the, the map is for seventy with the first phase has thirty-five. And I, I guess my first question is, uh, Counsel Hoi pointed out that the dog park got bigger. Does that have anything to do with the parking?
No, it does not. Uh, the, the way we accomplished, just briefly, to, to increase the dog park was just to remove a park path.
That's what I thought, but thank you for confirming it. Um, yeah, secondarily, moving back to the, the pullout area that was in, uh, the first, uh, plan with ninety-four spaces, I didn't actually think that that would be used for buses. I thought that that might be used for like, you know, private shuttles or, you know, more ride sharing in the future. I, I don't know if staff has any comments on that, but I mean, I think that the way people travel will change. I don't know if it's going to be in, you know, five years, ten years, fifteen years, but I'm a little concerned that this is still an old model with just regular parking spaces. It, what was the staff's thought with that, that pullout ninety-four? Was that for a bus? Or was that just for like, you know, community members dropping kids off and, and private vehicles?
So the intent of the pull-off areas were, were the latter, to, to, to provide a space for, for families to unload their vehicles and their passengers, um, a drop-off, uh, of, of a, of a family, more or less. Um, and, and again, I, we didn't completely remove that concept. It's just been scaled back in the current proposal.
So, uh, help me see it. Where is the, the, the area where it's, uh, where that like pull-through is?
Yeah, um, on the, on the northern driveway where, where you access from Park Avenue, there, there is, you, you might have to squint or I could pull up a graphic and zoom in. Uh, there is an area where, um, there are removable bollards. So, so it's also a way that maintenance vehicles can access, but it's also a curb area where, where you could pull over and unload. And it's adjacent to the restroom, if that helps you at all.
And which, which restroom? Like which number on the?
Well, all the, all the restrooms are numbered the same. Uh, so this would be the restroom adjacent to the playground.
Okay, I'll try and figure it out. Um, so, uh, is there, in the original plan for ninety-four, was it all going to be built in one, one swoop? And I guess, you know, when would that, uh, pull air, pull-out area have been included in the original ninety-four plan?
Um, the pull-out area in the original ninety-four plan would have been developed with the later, with the later phase of development associated with the, the new ball fields. So it would not have come right away. Um, I'm going to zoom in some more here. Uh, Counsel Phillips, so we do have this, this area right here, if you could see my cursor. This, this would be a small area designated for unloading and for drop-off.
All right. Uh, and then, um, so what I heard mentioned, uh, by, uh, the, the President of SBRAB was that the consultant had actually requested more parking than ninety-four. But because of our community efforts to cut greenhouse gases, that they scaled it back to ninety-four. So ninety-four was a cut. Is that correct?
That's correct. The original recommendation to accompany the uses proposed was a hundred and forty additional parking spots.
Okay. So, um, I mean, I, I, I have some concerns. I mean, I guess my question to staff is, you know, how different is this phase that we're looking at? I mean, I think that Counsel Anderson's motion looks like, you know, the first phase of parking in the original proposal, not the amended proposal. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, it, it is, it is slightly more by five, by five stalls than we, uh, have initially thought we would develop in the first, uh, development of additional parking, which is not to say it would be the next phase of park development. So the next phase of park development, we're not anticipating any more parking, but then after that, we would come back and do some development. And as presented to you tonight, we were proposing to develop thirty-five stalls.
And, and I guess the, my detailed question on this, I'm sorry for so many, but how many parking spaces would have been developed in the detailed, uh, you know, phase one of the ninety-five, the ninety-four, uh, parking spaces?
Yes. We, we didn't come with that type of detail presented in the master plan for, based on the, the interest in this issue. We added more context to that issue when we came back to you. Um, so we, we did say we would do a phase parking and that is true. And that hasn't changed. We've just added more detail about how many, the number we would, we would specifically do, if that makes sense.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I am genuinely concerned that like, I think we're all, you know, very well-meaning, you know, smart people here trying to make a good decision for our community. And, and a lot of us are very passionate on like trying to achieve those very difficult to achieve, you know, reducing greenhouse gases. And I, I just don't know that, like, if we're tying your hands too much um, at the picking this, you know, hill to climb up, um, as our stand. I mean, I think that city staff genuinely speaking know the, the policies that we've set for you and are taking that into account all the time. Um, I know that the only way I'm going to get to this park, uh, electric vehicle otherwise i- is by driving here. Um, and I know that we're creating draws like the dog park that, uh, I think it was said last time around, that you can't get there on, on. that I think it was said last time around, you can't get there on mass transit, like pets aren't allowed. Is that also correct?
I was able to confirm that dogs are not allowed on chariots buses. That's correct.
So if, I guess, you know, what I'm hearing now is that it doesn't matter how I vote tonight because the initial phase between the original proposal, the in-between proposal, and then Tom's motion right now is all about the same. But if I'm concerned that this is, I, do you have any concerns as staff that we're making a mistake with how we're building this or we're prescribing you to build this?
I do not. The initial, the initial 35 stalls would serve the uses that we're anticipating to include the playground, the skate park, the picnic shelters, passive uses. I don't anticipate those additional ball fields will be developed in the next five to 10 years. If they were, I would be concerned about it. And that's just my, that's my opinion.
Well, I value your opinion, so thank you for sharing it.
So there'll be another chance to deal with the issues of needed parking. And there would have been under the staff recommendation as well. It is what I'm kind of hearing. I can do, you know, you can do it now, do it later, but it's going to be in the mix before it's over. If you develop certain parts of the park and you determine that parking's needed, you'll be back. Okay. So Tom, what's the point of this motion? I'm still having trouble here trying to figure out. Are we making, are we making the, are we making social media happy or are we trying to actually solve a problem here?
You know, Chuck, I have no idea what's going on with social media and nor do I care to know that.
I thought it sounded pretty familiar.
No. I want to set the council on the road to trying to achieve our climate action goals. And admittedly, this is a drop or two in the bathtub, but we got to start someplace. And so here we are.
Okay. So do you need to restate your motion and we'll move on and vote?
I don't know. I restated it a while ago, but I will if anybody.
Yeah, let's just make sure we all got the same one and we'll vote.
Okay, I won't use the word only. I move, I move, we approve the revised update to the Gear Park master plan with the amendment to add 40 parking spaces to the plan.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Okay, if the recorder please call a roll.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Leung?
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye, excuse me, aye.
Councilor Nordeig?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis?
No.
Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes. Okay, is the next one yours as well, Tom?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I can remove that because the question I had was about, I already asked, I got mixed up with all the motions we have and all the polls we have. So I already asked my questions about trees in the master plan. So to Mr. Fernandez, so I move, we accept the excellent staff report on the Bushes Park master plan.
And that's 3.3B?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Second, and Hoy seconds.
I got no discussion. Let's just vote.
Well, just in case anyone has any. Anybody? Okay. If the recorder please call a roll.
Councilor Leung?
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Councilor Nordeig?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis?
Aye.
Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes. Okay, and the next one I have is 3.3J, Councilor Stapleton.
Thank you. I move staff recommendations.
Second.
Second by Lewis.
Thank you, yeah, I wanted to take a moment to pull this up here to have a deeper conversation about it because we had so many people write in and call me personally and reach out to express their concerns and questions over the project. And so I as well had questions, lots of them. And Director Fernandez was gracious with his time over the weekend to help me understand what all is going on. And so for the public, it is a temporary right-of-way so that staff could utilize private land in order to complete the light installation at Liberty and Union, and also to help build out the ADA compliant ramps throughout the project. And then at the end of those projects, the right-of-way will be returned. And this is not buying the land all the way up to widen the street or cut down any trees along Union Street. Now, there are a lot of concerns with the plans that are out there right now, which do show some removal of trees and some widening to allow for some parking. And that brought up another question. And I know I had this written down here so I wouldn't forget, but I know that there are some questions and concerns with how we have this set up. And I believe Director Fernandez, maybe you can help me out here. We have a policy 1.2 in the bicycle system element within the transportation plan that I feel the council needs to address because it is maybe a little out of date or it just needs another look at. So I'm hoping that we can, either I can bring a motion forward or staff can provide information report on this or we can do a work session, whatever it is that we need to do to tackle that issue so that as we build out our bike infrastructure, we have more flexibility to do so without it costing an arm and a leg for right-of-way and widening of streets, which I know this council is not all on board with that idea. So overall, this is a fantastic project. It is important to Ward 1, it's important to the whole city and to our climate action. And approving this tonight will just allow staff to be able to get that right-of-way temporarily, to get this project going this next year. Really important for timeline that we get it going right now.
Very good, absolutely. Could, I would ask on your separate discussion that you and Mr. Fernandez and the manager talk to each other and figure out how you'd like to bring this back rather than discuss that tonight.
Sounds great, thank you.
It's not part of what's in front of us. Is that okay?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Councilor Anderson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I never had any concerns about the right-of-way. I never had any concerns about this being an excellent, fantastic project. My concern is two things, additional parking and removing trees. And I'm still a little unclear as to, is that, and I have to say, I read the, you know, I read everything, including the agreement with the state, and I really wasn't able to figure out what the agreement was about and what was going to happen. And I've also seen the June 8th presentation, and that doesn't exactly say. So I'm just hoping that Director Fernandez could address the issue of whether there will be trees removed and whether there will be additional parking. And I don't know if that was kind of Councilor Stapleton's concerns, but if we approve this, does that mean trees are going to be removed automatically? Or are we going to come back and see some iterations?
Mayor, my name is, approval of this agreement does not remove one tree.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me be clear right there. As said, and we had a long, we had several email exchanges and then a nice conversation to get all this cleared up because those are important considerations. The agreement is simply to allow, this is federally funded program, so that's why ODOT is involved. What we need are small temporary construction easements to get the project completed. So that doesn't do anything. This project also does not add any new parking spaces.
Then that's perfect, and I'm glad, I know that there has been concerns. And thank you, Director Fernandez, for responding to this as well as responding to the issue of trees in Bushes Park. That's extremely helpful. I'm going to support this wholeheartedly.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, if the recorder could please call the roll.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Councilor Nordeig?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis?
Aye.
Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Leung?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes. We'll move on then to information reports. Any questions, anyone has or comments? Okay. And I'm going to move to first readings.
Ordinance bill number 821, an ordinance vacating a portion of an alley and a portion of an unopened right-of-way for 12th Street Northeast adjacent to the railroad northeast of D Street Northeast.
Councilor Stapleton? Go make a motion.
This is the first time I've had to do this, so guide me on this. I apologize.
Go ahead and just move staff recommendation.
Okay, I move staff recommendations, apologize.
Okay, no, no, no problem.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Any discussion? Okay, the recorder please call a roll.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Councilor Nordeig?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis?
Aye.
Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Leung?
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, we'll move then to Councilor Lewis, you've got the next one, it looks like.
I'll read the ordinance title. It's ordinance bill number 921, an ordinance vacating a portion of an easement over previously vacated George Street Northwest.
Remove staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Do you want to discuss it?
No.
No. Okay, if the recorder, does anyone want to? If the recorder would please call the roll.
Councilor Nordeig?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis?
Aye.
Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Leung?
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes and we'll go to our second reading.
Ordinance bill number 621, an ordinance relating to real property interest, amending SRC 2.200 and creating new provisions. Councilor Lewis?
You know you have too much work to do when Warden gets to vote first, twice. Vote aye.
Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Leung?
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Councilor Nordeig?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes. We have one person signed up under public comment, Steve Anderson.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, good. Good afternoon or good evening, Mayor and City Councilman. My name is Steve Anderson, West Salem Neighborhood Association Land Use Chair and Ward 8. Speaking here primarily based on conversations today with Councilor Lewis and a phone call from City Attorney Dan Atchison, dealing with the appeal of the property at 2230 Doakes Ferry. Not that the Neighborhood Association is appealing the property. We're in favor of the development, but we appealed it because Bryce Bishop came to the Planning Commission work session and said the city was in violation of goal five. There are at least three lots on this site that were going to be cited in the repairing area, which violates an administrative rule. And it was going to destroy the habitat of a headwater salmon, made a salmon stream. And they would impact a endangered species salmon section downstream on the dolved oxygen. And it was also going to put about four or five lots in a landslide hazard area by Dogami. So for consideration, we would ask the council to consider pulling this up to hear the hearing yourself or based on a conversation with Dan Atchison that you receive and review that you would allow staff and the city attorney to work with the planning commission to reopen the hearing, to move forward and correct some major fatal flaws in the procedural process. First, Mr. Eastley's written testimony was not included and excluded from the final record. So the planning commission did not have access to that. And secondly, there is a sir rebuttal issue that was made when the applicant during rebuttal introduced new testimony and it was missed. Talking with Mr. Atchison about that, it was a very technical issue and he didn't catch it. And quite honestly, it wouldn't have been caught unless you were familiar with all the technical issues. But that sir rebuttal is required under Luba rules, and it was excluded from the planning hearing commission. When asked to make a point of order, the chairman did not listen or allow point of order. And so we're asking you either hear it yourself or allow staff and the city attorney to work as he suggested to Mr. Easterly to open the record or open the hearing and let them move forward. The main issue here is, as we spoke with Jim Lewis today, he was very kind. He was going to bring the issue up, but he talked with Lisa and she said the city lost their opportunity to do that. I talked with Mr. Atchison and he went through some legal mumble jumble on the case, but we think that the Neighborhood Association still has the right and it's not lost the right to ask you to bring it up. But we think maybe after further consideration, item two might be a better course and less contentious. And so West Salem Association does feel because that the sir rebuttal was denied and Mr.
Sorry, Mr. Anderson, your time's up. Okay, thank you very much, and we are.
Wait, though.
What do you want?
Quite frankly, I, there's been, I'm going to say accusations made. I'd like to hear from the city attorney whether he's recommending that this issue be re-looked at or not.
Thank you, Dan Atchison, City Attorney. It is true, I did speak to Mr. Anderson and Mr. Easterly today, so it's a red-letter day for me. This issue is beyond council's purview at this point. It was, the planning administrator's decision was on your agenda as an information report earlier. It was not called up. It was appealed by the Neighborhood Association, who then, we didn't conduct a hearing at the planning commission this past Tuesday. The planning commission has not issued a written decision yet, and we are considering the procedural issues that have been raised.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Atchison. Sounds like it's going through the process. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we're adjourned.